Okay, I'm gonna start off with one and. My oversight calls. So remember on the twentieth, we basically. Recounted what we consider successes from various departments, etc. Community boards, but we left out a big one. So the good news is focused on this one tonight. We had an early meeting instead of the five hour meeting. Or if you lost those people, so hopefully more people will care this. So this is the planning board, planning department. They sent an email that I just. So there we go. And they actually had some really good. So the planning department and planning board had a really great year with several success stories. The master plan was completed, accepted, thanks to the efforts of the master plan committee. The plan was written almost entirely by the committee with minimal consultant help and expenditure of town funds. Which wasn't the case in previous times. And the end product was really brought to life thanks to all the residents that sent in. Photos from around town. If you have not had time to see it, it's on the website. The plan is poised to take us into 2030 and be ready. The planning board also wanted wasted no time in getting the. Recommendations from the master plan world. The board pointed the master plan implementation committee and they have all run it. At least you're. Alright, um, that's number one, and that's a big. Second was planning department and planning board. Have been proactive in exploring the most advantageous way for Southboro becoming MBTA compliant community. Recently passed law voting housing, more specifically creating multi-family housing by right in certain zones, mainly around key. Stop, please, paint sites, etc. Staff has been taking advantage of the resources offered by Nass Housing Partnership to learn more about this new requirement. During this process, we have attended many workshops and become aware of a financial assistance that was being offered through state funding. We applied immediately as zoning can be very complicated, as we know. In obtaining technical help, zoning will work to the towns and standards, especially with the state office to pay for a quarter. Just this week, it's time of the week in twelve, twelve, twelve twenty-two. They were notified that the town Southboro has been awarded a grant in the amount of $20,000. So the planning board, planning department will be working with the engineering firm of Bowler. The O H O R Engineering, a highly respected firm that is fully vetted on MBTA. Communities and committed to our success. And we've got this on our agenda too for January seventeenth, so they're gonna come. I talked to Kobe today, so they're gonna come and basically update us on where they stand, but they basically take the lead in this. And we're just, we're just gonna listen with things. We signed what we're supposed to sign in person first admission, so they think they're in good shape. The planning board, so next, that's number two. Third is the planning board in coordination with the open space preservation commission. Again contracted Lucas Environmental to do field reports on seven of our open space areas. For reporting includes action items for search things as encroachments and dumping. This information is available for the open spaces we had helps the town maintain being untouched as it was intended. Number four. Tree City USA continues to be an ongoing accomplishment for Southboro. The application to maintain our status as a tree city. For our fourth year was just recently submitted and we plan to continue the community's tree city USA status through the Arbor Day Foundation. The program requires annual recertification to maintain our status as a tree city USA community. The planning board is continuing their efforts to pass a tree protection dialogue at annual town meeting in the support of our destination as a tree city. The Tree City USA designation provides urban leads for grant funding and mighty city protection trees. Which enrich the environment, increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify the community. So again, I apologize for the omission, but hopefully that made up. Okay, um, next is public comments. So we do public comment at the first last of our meetings. Public comment is for comments and don't relate to specific agenda items. If you want to talk about a specific agenda item, wait till we get to it and then we can speak. So anyone would talk about something that's not on the agenda.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
So I prepared a statement. So thank you for acknowledging the planning board tonight, Kathy. Our accomplishments for 2022. Ironically, my next comment is regarding the process for D P W candidate selection and interviews and the omission of our town planner in that process. The head of D P W and the planning board must work in a strong partnership. Period. The management of scenic roads, stone walls and trees are just one way. Where that relationship failed with the former D P W pen. Omitting Karina Quinn. Our diligent, credible and trusted town planner and civil engineer. From this process is deplorable. She has tremendous experience. Depth in engineering. And understands the requirements for some of the D P W responsibilities. She has an excellent reputation for being fair and open. And has a vast network across the state. For conducting diligence and insight gathering on potential candidates. The process was flawed. And I fear not in the best interest of our taxpayers. I'd recommend that the select board seriously consider postponing a decision. Until Karina has an opportunity to speak with both candidates and provide her feedback to the board. While Karina has an exceptionally busy schedule. This is an extraordinarily important position. That requires both strategic and tactical scrutiny. Which she can offer. I'm frankly dismayed and disappointed. That she was excluded from the process. That's my public comment. Thank you.
So can you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Alexis Fallon. I am a property owner at sixty breakneck Hill Road. I am the abutter to the town's farm dump. So I'm sure that this is going to be a part of meetings later on that are coming up. But one of the issues I wanted to bring to the town's attention is we're trying right now to enter into an agreement with the town. So that they can access my property. To do testing pits. As well as to clean up. Okay, which I wish to cooperate, however. The problems that we're having is that the right of entry that was proposed exceeded. The administrative consent order that the town had entered into with the Department of Environmental Protection regarding solid waste management. I've already discussed this with D E P. I've already discussed it with the town's council. I have indicated to them that there are certain waivers I cannot give the town. So I want to be very clear. I cannot waive contamination waiver, general liability waiver, which is what they request. Number one, it is not required by the administrative consent order that was required by D E P. They did not say that I had to sign a waiver. Okay, they asked for my permission and that they would clean up. I have no idea what the test pits will reveal. I in the, in the lowlands. So to make it a little bit more graphic. The town's farm dump is on a higher elevation plane than my property. I own the riverbed that feeds the class A reservoirs in Southboro. If you know anything about filtration and how. Things move after forty and fifty years in a dump. You have to understand that most of it will descend and go into the lowlands and start to feed into the lowest parts of the property. This is my property and this is the my riverbed. So we need to test it, which is appropriate. It's, it has to be followed, we have to clean it up, so let's be clear. I'm praying that there's no. Other contaminants. I've had my property tested up in the, up near my house. I didn't know how far back I have four acres. I didn't know that I owned that piece, I had to get a land surveyor. So I thought that was the town, so that's the one area I didn't test. I tested near my pond, I tested behind the pond, I tested. I just didn't know that I own that. So now we need to test one area that I didn't know about. So that is the biggest issue. I'm willing to allow the town onto my property to clean up, partly because I'm a practical person. We do need to clean up the refuse, we have to clean up the garbage. So far, the thirty-five test pits have cleared and we have no toxic chemicals. But I am in the lowest point of this testing program. So when they come onto my property. Everybody is concerned. Because this is the one thing they asked me to waive. They asked me to waive all liability for the contamination, yet I would have no ability. To clean up their dump. I would be responsible legally to clean up my riverbed. But you guys understand, like, I would be stuck, like, okay, I can try to clean up the riverbed, but if I can't clean up the dump part, how am I gonna solve the problem? So it was a very mechanical engineering question, which I gave to my environmental engineer, which he also taught to D E. So, so far, I believe that the testing will be okay. I really do, because I've had tests done on my property and I haven't seen any chemicals, okay? But I cannot give you. This waiver of general liability for contamination prior to testing, I just can't, because the scope of the project is only solid waste. The administrative consent order only deals with solid waste. If you do have any other types of contaminants such as oil, petrochem. That goes under the hard hazardous waste program. So that's a different program. Right now, we're only under solid waste. We have not popped any type of chemicals to indicate a more deeper need, which is good. But remember, it's like silos. Solid waste is one silo. Hazardous waste is another silo. Nuclear waste, all that other stuff is a third silo. A fourth silo is public waste, like, you know, sewer systems. So when we look at the law of environmental law, we have to understand that solidly. The farm dump is under the Solid Waste Act. All testing puts it into this box. If any of the tests five feet down pop to indicate a hazardous substance. It then triggers the next silo, which is hazardous waste, and that's called contamination. Those are the words, when you hear words of contamination, that is indicated in that one, like, in that silo. So the words for solid waste are refuse. And it excludes hazardous substances, public sewer, like, you know, waste like that, and nuclear waste. So those are specifically excluded from the solid waste act. So right now, the town is under the Solid Waste Act. The request is under the Solid Waste Act. I'm fine with that. I, we jointly agree, we need to clean it up. I just wanna, I wanna help the town, but I also have to protect myself, and that's the reason why I came to speak today. Because the issue is the contamination, the word contamination, I cannot give. That general waiver, but that does not mean I'm not cooperating, it just means. I, I legally would be tying my hands and I wouldn't, it's right, so I just wanted everybody to understand. So I'm agreeing, except excluding, okay? So if anyone has any questions, because this is an involved process. You're more, more than happy to answer them since I'm the neighbor to the dump, so I, you know, I'm sure you guys have wondered about me. I've never been in, you know, this is the first time I've had a chance to comment.
We appreciate that, and it is coming to a head.
Correct. And we also have to put it on the agenda too, because there's just, it's so involved everyone, that I only wanted to introduce it. Good, alright, because I want to comment again, you know, obviously I want to participate. So that's why I wanted to come tonight, because it's coming to a head and I'm trying to rush to get it done, but I'm just like, okay, everybody. I really tried to go as fast as possible, but we just had to, we had to know the limits. Yeah, okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have one online in that.
I just have one quick question, the R V N D multiple. Gonna be here, and you really wanna know the answer.
We're gonna open the rebook, the hearings office, we're going to speak to it, so it's gonna be continued again. Hi Patty. Can you hear us? Patty, you're muted.
Oh, I think that was totally my fault, I'm sorry. You're right, I didn't have it unmuted, that's a dodo mistake. Okay, as I believe you're intending to decide on your D P W superintendent tomorrow, I have a couple of questions before that's done. Has the job description for new hire changed at all from the job description of the outgoing superintendent? And if in, and if so, in what way? You don't know whether you can answer that now.
So Patty, remember, we really can't respond to something that's not on the agenda. But that's a question that Mr. Purple can probably ask. And Ms. Brashio is gonna have to excuse herself if we start talking about this anyway, so we'll get an answer to you.
Okay. For months now, many people in this town have been requesting oversight of and accountability from our Department of Public Works, as well as superintendent. Bringing in a new superintendent is the perfect opportunity to correct the past wrongs and set a better trap for moving ahead. And that includes better accountability on projects. Better working relationships and partnerships with other town boards and committees. And more fiscal responsibilities to the taxpayer of, the taxpayers of Southboro. I urge you to consider the wishes of the people that elected you to office. And put our needs first. This, this department requires oversight and supervision. And this is the correct time to make sure that's in place to move forward. Thank you.
For the record, Ms. Brashio just recused herself, so. Thank you, Patty. Did she hear you? Okay, so, um. Everybody recalls, we opened a hearing for the. R Z in the movement for the class two, otherwise since they wanted a couple changes to it, we opened it and we continued it.
Chairman, members of the board, so again, from, from the last meeting until now, we did have an inquiry. From a resident who lives down in the area about. The, the application for the minimum of the class two license to increase its main spaces to fourteen spaces for used cars. This property has had several applications before the Z B A beginning back in nineteen eighty. And in nineteen eighty-two. Property did receive a special permit for to allow up to two vehicles. On the used vehicles to be sold on the property, no more than two. There was a couple of other various applications to the Z B A over the years that were either denied or withdrawn. In two thousand and fifteen, the minor site plan review, reviewed and request to increase that from two to eight. Minor site plan review moved that, leading the word send notification to the applicant. It was minor site plan had improved and increased, and from that point forward, any class two license petition by the board. Carried that, that eight number. All of this was done under negotiation, if you remember, with the last, the last property owner who has since passed on, former town council. So new town council is taking a look at this and saying, I'm not sure that minor site plan review can. Can over, overtake or, you know, over the rule what was done in nineteen, in nineteen eighty-two by Z B A. The correct path may be in fact having to go back to Z B A to amend special part. We do not have an answer on that tonight. Council is speaking with the town planner as well as the building commissioner to get their. Their points of view on this will be granted opinion. And therefore, I would recommend that they do continue the hearing, that's council's recommendation as well. Already spoken with the applicant. She's aware of the situation, I think she just wants to go the path that she needs to go. So rather than have the board potentially take an action that could. Increase what you may not, we shouldn't have increased, or we shouldn't have lived by originally to past fifteen. We'll wait for council's opinion, and it may be that you have to go to Z B A first before it can come to this.
Can I make a suggestion? So, and actually, it was just because I was talking to one of the ladies I'm following, and they don't. Necessarily access them in that, so they're wondering if when the decision is made, whether it's from the, when the next meeting on this is gonna be with us, or if it's gonna go someplace else. If there's any way to send me a butters, a letter, we don't, we can't access. So I mean, I just. Think it makes sense.
One resident came to speak to me and said that they were somewhat like the spokesperson. That people went to, which is why they've come to see me, so I'm happy to facilitate it back through them. And see if they could reach out to me, if it was just to make.
That's right, I just want to make sure that they're aware that they need to come back, or they don't need to come back. Thank you.
Any questions on the plan to continue the hearing until we get our answer to them?
You wanna answer your question first and we get to that?
Sure, so if the. Recommendation of town council is that the applicant should go to the Z B A. Do we then close out our hearing? Yes, so we'll then close the hearing, but until we get that opinion, we should probably leave it open, yeah. Okay.
So Hassan, can you bring over, it looks like Laura.
Hi, can you hear me? Great, um, so in lieu of this being postponed or extended. I have a question regarding the current licensing. What is the enforcement measures for when their current license agreement of eight vehicles is being exceeded? Because this has been a regular occurrence since they, you know, started selling vehicles at the lot.
Laura, did you hear me?
I, I did not, I'm sorry, it's very soft.
I know, we, we, so I'm gonna say it again, a little bit louder and slower, so the person in charge of the enforcement of the class two license is our building inspector. Her name is Lori LeBolle.
Okay, so any concern should be. Directed to her, the building inspector?
Yes.
And are there set fines or warnings that are set out by the town for when someone does not abide by their current license?
Upon inspection by the building commissioner after several attempts to correct the behavior, so to speak. I think that information would come back to the select board as a licensing authority. The board may then want to have a conversation with the license holder to try and correct that behavior. Given that the renewal of their licenses is predicated upon them following the terms of the license.
No renewal takes place annually.
And there are funds, potentially, there are fines, potentially. Yeah, there are potential fines, I, you know, I think that this building commissioner has wanted to try to work with people to correct the behavior, rather than that being first. For, so I mean, I mean, if you let, if you let the building commissioner know, you know, feel free to let, you know, let me know as well through the town administrator's office, I'm happy to help channel that for you. We can, we can help to try to better educate the license holder as to their responsibilities.
So Laura, I would suggest that you email Lori LeBolle, that's Lori LeBolle at southboroMA.com, and call me to Mr. Purple.
Great. Thanks so much.
Okay. Any other comment before we continue here? If I make a motion to continue the. R V N D hearing. So Mr. Parent is.
You've just stepped out.
Hassan, it says there's three, four attendees, but you only see three. So when you guys do that, we're gonna move on until we can get them, because I think we need for it to be good. To be effective. Okay, let's go on to our reports, okay, so chair's report. So I've already said it, but it's repeated, so we are going to invite planning board through. Coming to, even because on the seventeenth, to make sure that we're up to speed on what's going on. And then just make sure we got everything done that we should. I was riding around the other day, it was Van Yard, and that was the story, that six communities have been dating because they have met whatever they're supposed to meet. So that had some of the rant time. Hopkinton is going to, they actually had a session today for a resident to come in and meet with. Yes, because you're gonna take a while, so I'm just trying, these are easy, quick things, okay, so we haven't gotten. Okay, so Hopkinton is doing their email dispatch information session, planning two parts, they had an information session this afternoon. From three to four with town employees for residents to come in, so don't know how that, but tomorrow night they're having their public session. It's from six to eight, and it looks like it's the same meeting, inviting Mike to watch. And from that, we're supposed to be able to get a better idea of where this is. We have not heard back from them as far as the water presentation makes far as. Um. So as everyone knows, just to make sure we got the schedule today. So tomorrow night at seven o'clock, we're interviewing. Two candidates for the VP Derby Superintendent position at the Public Safety Building. There's some size of the building, right? Um, we'll do one at seven, one at eight. Um, after we did the second, we'll decide what we want to do next, um, which could include a Zoom meeting on Friday. We've got a Zoom meeting set up that we needed on Friday morning at eight thirty. On the seventeenth, we're also going to seat or take the steps that we need to um, basically implement the C I C committee. Um, so we will at the same time just stand ad hoc capital community that's been in place for three, four years now. Yeah, maybe four times five. Um, so that's going to happen on seventeen. That is a request from Jason O'Nolsey, um, to do that. He realizes he's still going to have a couple of babies because I think Lisa will have to, yeah, um, leave and not be on C C, but he, he wants to do this. This was his request. So we will do that on seventeen. Okay, that's it for me. Um. All right.
Moran is there.
All right, so. Mr. Moran meant to be here, but he's not here to be here because.
Good evening, everyone.
So why don't we turn it over to you and then you bring in Bob as you want to bring him in. Um, you're going to do the whole presentation that we have.
I'll go over the presentation, basically, Bob. Uh, just a quick background, as I'm sure you're all aware, hopefully everyone out there is aware as well. Um, South has been a green community for quite a few years now. And generally, one of the first things a community does as a green community is convert your street lights over to L E Ds. These are substantial savings which result in reduced greenhouse gas emissions. These are usually the primary thing. We had looked at doing this at the time. Unfortunately, at the time, the only option through National Grid for L E D street lighting was four thousand kelvins. These are much more blue and bright than most people like. Human beings are generally accustomed to more yellow light. That's more of the three thousand twenty-seven hundred Kelvin range. It's just basically colored. Um, so at that time, uh, the planning board was working on a lighting bylaw for the town. Where they wanted to go forward with three thousand Kelvin lighting. Again, I'm a three thousand Kelvin light person myself. My house is three thousand Kelvin. I don't like bright white light. Um, so I'm like, okay, so I started. There you go, Bob. Um, so I started working with Bob Moran of National Grid. I had requested, you know, we need three thousand Kelvin lights and dark sky friendly. What can you do for us? So Bob started carrying the water of National Grid for us and he, it's taken years to do this. Getting something changed on a tariff is not easy. And now we're going to fast forward a few years and voila, we finally have three thousand Kelvin lights available. And these things are taken off like rocket ships around the state. They're getting orders for these left and right from towns. Because you finally have a light that is more yellow. It's, it's got the nice crisp cutoff, so it's not really giving a lot of light pollution in your gray sky partly, and you save a ton of money. These are all nice factors. Um, so needless to say. It's really time for Southboro to convert their light zone. It's long overdue and we now have met the requirements of the planning board's lighting bylaw. And we have a product that we put in some samples around town. And as I had mentioned in the original email I sent. You're always going to have some people that are not going to like L E D lighting. It happens. And every town I've talked to has had this issue says the same thing. Goes on for about a month or two. All of a sudden it stops because people acclimated to it. It's a change. Human beings don't always like change. But this is a change that is responsible. Not only from an environmental perspective, but from a fiscal perspective. So that's why we are here tonight. We are here hoping to get your approval to move forward with this process. So we can get going on this. This is not something that happens overnight. This can take up to a year to do. They're getting back lost. So we want to get on this list. We want to get going. So um, with that, I'm going to let Bob just give us a quick presentation here and we can take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thank you, John, and um, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Purple. Um, and anyone from the general public. For the record, my name is Bob Moran. I am. A community manager with National Grid and I've worked closely with the town of Southborough. For a number of years now, about six years I've been. Community manager and I've been before this board a couple of times previously. So, um. What I'd like to do, I would have liked to be there in person, but we're dealing with a sort of family COVID protocol situation. So. Um, please forgive me for that. So, um, just for context, I, I do salute and congratulate uh, the town of Southborough and John Parent in particular for. Um, pushing to get. The three K lights offered through the tariff, as you might not realize it. Our tariff is basically our menu and anything we put on the menu, it has to be approved through the D P U. That process involves filings and interveners can. Get in the process and testify. There are data requests that go back and forth. So it, it, it takes a year and a half or so to get a rate filing approved. So. Thank you for being patient as we worked to get this squared away and we are now at the point where we can offer three K lights. Um, and again, thanks to Southboro for helping us get over the hump with that. Um, so I, I see that the. Um, presentations on the screen, if we just jump to this, to the next slide there. Um. Just a cautionary note, there'll be some assumptions that I'll talk about um, throughout this presentation and, and. There are some cost and savings numbers, but the final numbers are going to vary a little bit. There are many mechanisms that flow in and out of rates and the big. Two factors that will change the value of the savings here are the supply costs, which uh, had a dramatic increase this year. Obviously, familiar with that. Um, and which the town has a solid negotiated contract for um, a, a good term. But that. Number is going to change as you go forward too. I don't, I think it's up at the end of next year, maybe. Um, each town has a little different timeline for their supply contract. Uh, so when that. Supply cost changes, so will the cost, which will then affect the savings. So, so there's a um, interplay with the supply costs and the net savings. And then importantly, the selection of wattages will have a big impact on what your final savings are. Um, the next slide, please. So generally, what we're talking about is um, the S one rate, which is full service. National Grid owns the sodium fixtures or the L E D fixtures. And it's a full service rate. You call in customer service. Um, and we'll put a trouble order in, we'll repair, replace, maintain the light. Um, if there's, you know, a road project or. Um, a storm where the light gets damaged, we'll replace that and there's no charge to you for that. Um, there are essentially four charges on the bill. The rental charge for the fixture itself, the pole charge, if you had lighting only, you do have a few. Uh, um, they're usually around the back of a school or a, a ball field or something like that. Um, so we charge for the pole. Uh, I don't think there's many, there's a couple in Southboro. Distribution charge, those are the wires, pipes, poles and wires that supply the power. And then the supply charge, which you obviously have contracted with a supplier. So, um. If we go to the next one, we can just work with John to come up with a comparison of a typical. High pressure sodium. So in, in Southboro, you have nine hundred and fifty-six lights. Um, almost a thousand lights and I think about six hundred and fifty of them are. Fifty watt sodium. So this is the majority of the lights that you have. Um, and what you see here is a comparison of. The fifty watt and the fifteen watt three K, the lumens, the lumens a little bit. Um. It looks like a dramatic reduction, the way it's presented here, but there's a reason that LEDs can provide dramatically lower. Consistent lighting levels with dramatically lower lumen output. Um, it has to do with the fixture. Matter of fact, if you jump back to the previous slide. Um, there's a. Um, one more, one more back, please. That is a illustration of the picture. No, I'm sorry, come forward. It's the one with the picture of the lighting fixture on it, on the right side. Go back to. Yeah. Back one, the slide three. There you go. So on the right is a example of a L E D fixture. And this is typical, there's underneath. These look a little differently from, from the high pressure sodium. There's no globe underneath. So. There's no um, diminishment of the light coming out of the fixture. So really. With the sodium fixtures, a lot of the light can kind of get, um, it's, it's called a refractor. It, it'll get refracted and dispersed in a certain way, but some of it is actually kind of trapped in there with no refractor on the LEDs. Um, you know, the, the light gets out of the fixture, much higher levels. Um, there's no chance for bugs getting sort of tangled up in the. Um, in the refractor, which can happen, bees nest, et cetera, can sometimes happen in the sodium. So, um, I'm sorry, back to. Slide four, yeah. So this is a comparison. Of the charges and the energy use. For uh, for fifty watt sodium to fifteen watt. And the, the bottom line is with the supply cost that you have right now. Your cost per year is about eighty-three dollars. I'm, I'm sorry, it's um, a hundred and thirty-nine dollars per year, per fixture. If you had the National Grid supply rate, it would be about two hundred. Per year, per fixture. And to change that to the nineteen watt. Um. Are we on the same slide? Yeah, to change that to the nineteen watt. Um, it would reduce the bill to either a hundred and seven on your own supply or a hundred and twenty-seven. And in, importantly, it saves, um, you know, about a hundred and seventy-one kilowatt hours. Which contributes to your green community's scoring. As well. So, um, we do provide incentives. For every kilowatt hour that you reduce. And in this example, and I'm looking at the. Uh, we're on slide five, so we're looking at the fifty watt sodium to the nineteen watt. Three K, um, you get an incentive of forty-two dollars for each fixture that you convert. So, um. If we move to, well, are we going too fast or might folks have questions?
No, but let's ask the question there because that's, I think, important to all of us here. Um. So the twenty-two seventy-five current fixture is just a check we get?
Yeah, when the project would be complete, um, we would, you know, once the. Fixtures are all changed and the lights have been updated, um, we'll be able to calculate the, the final incentive, but. You know, the, the select, your selection of a. Fixure will determine the, the amount of savings. In fact, we're, we're looking at slide five. If we look at slide four. Um. This would be another alternative, which is actually, which is actually a little bit lower wattage and you see the incentive is forty-seven dollars. So the incentive is a little higher in this case. Um, so. This is kind of illustrating the point I made in the disclaimer that, that the selection of wattages will determine savings and incentives. I'm sorry, I think someone was asking a question.
Bob, sorry, I didn't want to talk over you, but I'm just trying to distinguish a check, like money in the bank, here you go, versus a credit against our bills going forward. Which would take.
Sure, so the, the ongoing. Cost of energy. And actually, the, you know, the rental, even the rental charges are a little bit lower. The LEDs, the costs have come down. So the, the ongoing costs will be slightly lower. And the energy will be significantly lower. And once the project completes, we'll total up the estimated energy savings and then we would provide you a check. One check for the sum total of the project. And when, when John and I worked together on estimating this. Um, I think we used the fifteen watt, which is the lower wattage. Um, and the final incentive was around sixty thousand dollars.
Actually, we went with the nineteen watt spot.
Oh, we did the nineteen, okay. Okay, so if we go to slide five. That talks about the nineteen and you can see there's a little difference in the lumens. This one goes four thousand to twenty-four hundred. Um, where the other one is four thousand to nineteen hundred and fifty-six. So. Savings are a little bit different. But substantial, either way. Um. And then on to slide six. This is a summary of the lights in Southboro. And it assumes that we went with the nineteen, the nineteen, right? And you may. Want to review that. You may find that there are some that it's more appropriate to go to the fifteen. You know, we, we looked at the seventy watt and said, um, maybe the nineteen will do, but maybe you want to go with the forty-one watt. Um, so it's important to make the point here that the selection of lighting wattages and. Styles and, and color temperatures is entirely up to the town. You know, National Grid won't make any recommendations or, um. You know, advice on the appropriateness of one light at an intersection. Some towns have very different streetlight policies. Some towns have very few lights. Southboro has a lot of lights, actually, the size of the town. Um. So this slide kind of summarizes that. You, you know, the total savings is. Five thousand dollars a month. Roughly. And you'd get a check back for sixty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-four if, if the selections were exactly as they're shown here.
To make what you said clear to everyone, listen. Um, we're talking at current electricity rates, saving year after year fifty-six thousand dollars, and then we've got the one-time payment of sixty-one thousand dollars.
Yes.
So it's not.
And, and it's not to get too into the weeds, but the, the savings is, is, is based on the supply cost that you have now. Um. When, when your supply is renegotiated, I'm, I'm quite sure it's going to be a higher cost. Um, that's just what the market has done in the time since you went out to supply, went out to bid for supply costs before. So. The savings. It, it, it's probably more. Correct to think of it as avoided costs than it is um, a, a budget savings. Because it, it is so dependent on what the supply cost is, um, if that makes sense. But. The other part of it is, is absolutely correct. You can get a one-time incentive of sixty-one thousand dollars. And there would definitely be reductions. You, you know, your, your cost right now is eight point six eight cents and National Grid is thirty-two point eight. So. When you go and renegotiate, you know, prices out there are. Around eighteen or nineteen cents, maybe. You know, your, your cost is going to go up. So theoretically, your savings. Will go down, but you could also state it in a way that your avoided cost is, is, has a greater value. So, I mean, it's. It's not the easiest analysis to um, to work through or to explain, but um, I, I give John credit for hanging in there, there with me on this and. Um, I'll try to answer any questions that the board or the public may have.
May I ask one on the incentive? So Bob, we're talking about the incentive. So this, this one-time incentive saving, what if for some crazy reason it takes two years to get all the lights done? And, and during that time, the rates go up. Are we locked in for this sixty-one thousand on what the rate is today? Or are we subject to potential difference in savings? Um, if it becomes after our locked-in rate changes?
Good question. So the savings are based on twenty-five cents. I mean, I'm sorry, the incentives. Are based on twenty-five cents a kilowatt hour saved. So when the project is complete and when all. You know, I'm, I'm saying nine hundred and fifty-six fixtures, but you could choose to change. Eight hundred or nine fifty or whatever. But when, when, when your project's complete. We will total up the estimated annual kilowatt hour savings and give you a check for that number times point two five.
That's, that's fixed.
It is. Yeah, it's been twenty-five cents a kilowatt hour for. Probably at least ten years, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
And going back to what Bob said a minute ago, Bob, I, you know, this is your business and, um, but. I would do the math, definitely as far as annual savings, once our rate goes up, uh, once the current agreement expires in twenty-three. I mean, if you're going to go to, you know, make it up, thirty cents, right? So then. Yeah, the cost, the gross cost goes up, but the spread between the new cost and all costs is bigger. So I think you save more, not less.
That's true.
Okay, yeah.
And I think, I think the real underlying factor is that we're using a lot less electricity. So whatever happens to the rates. We're still using a lot less electricity. So whatever happens to the rates, we're still using a lot less electricity, it's going to be lined up, or it's going to be saved directly as the driver. And to Sam's point, when we do save on electricity use, it definitely helps our standing with green community, which helps our ability to get more grant money. And so it's, it's really, it's a nice snowball effect.
Yeah, and the other thing that I don't think I mentioned is that National Grid does not charge to do this conversion. This is, you know, it's a good service that we can offer the communities. We're happy to convert these, if the town chooses, we're happy to keep the existing lights in place if they prefer them. But it's entirely up to the community what, how they want to proceed. And, and really, that kind of brings us to the next slide, which is slide seven. You know, just what you have to do to initiate this, just give us a letter telling us you want to convert. And, you know, you got to work up a spreadsheet with what wattages you want for each fixture. I would say it's also a very good time to review, you know, maybe there are intersections that you want to take a second look at. When, when we're changing the lights is a good time to, to get a good, a good fresh look at the lighting in town.
Before we get the letter to spreadsheet submitted in the next, I don't know what I'm thinking, to put some of these months. It would take about eighteen months in your best, to truly have the project complete.
Eighteen's probably long, I, I would think it would be less. I, I've seen some communities with similar, you know, six or eight hundred fixtures, take nine to twelve months. So, you know, it's, it's, it's good capital work for us. Some of this work will be done by trouble workers, you know, off-hours. So if there's no trouble, we've got the truck and, you know, we've got the ability to do it. And, you know, this, this, it also speaks to the ability to respond to light outages. You know, John is, is excellent at telling me where lights are out and, you know, we'll enter trouble orders and we can usually get them repaired in, in a day or two. And, you know, this, this project would use trouble workers to, to do some of this. Some of them on main roads probably will involve police details. You know, they'd have to be set up and, and we, we would work closely with the, the police on, on those change outs. But yeah, eighteen months feels a little bit long to me, I, I would think we should be able to get it completed in about a year.
So what we're going to do now is let four ask questions. And then I want to ask Julie Hahn, any questions for your comment, right? We've got, I got the email too, that I just received a couple of questions. And so Bob and the audience here and the room where we are are the, is the person who really spearheaded the passage of the bylaw that we have now, Marty Bulingham from the planning board. She also was to the help of a professor at WPI who lives in South.
Okay.
And he's here with us too.
Excellent.
Marty has some questions this afternoon that she asked Karen, who answered them? So I'd like to have given him a chance to, to just speak to this before we vote. So Andrew, start with you, you've got any.
I don't really have any questions, I don't see the downside of doing this and I bought you for brainless, or to me, I mean, one, you know, you would have learned this, there were a couple of samples, if that operate, like in five, what is that, five? Reservoir, I thought you couldn't really see the contrast as much there, but one, where you can clearly see the contrast is Oregon Road. Right, there's ashland change that I would be five years ago, that's where you go. You immediately see the difference, I, I like the ashland side, I think it's darker, nicer, I mean, there's less Indian land just flooding the area on this.
Yeah, like, I think the term you're looking for is light trespass, there's less light trespass from these fixtures and they are what's the industry calls dark sky compliant, so that there is no uplight component. The light is all driven down, you know, pretty sharp photometric cutoff. It's a, the high-quality fixtures that are dark sky compliant, yeah.
I was interested to hear you mention about you know, for better, to go review like intersection by intersection, if there are places where there are lights out, because I have one in particular, I won't take up time here.
I need a street and a pole number, that's all I need.
There you go, yeah. Even a house number, we can probably work with that.
Outside Andrew's bedroom. Eight hundred watts.
Sam?
Thank you, good presentation and this certainly makes a lot of sense to me, all the reasons you suggest, John. And I have looked at the new lights and I like them and relative to the sodium vapor. And particularly again, because of the light scattering thing, I think it's clearly not going to focus. And from a safety standpoint, I'm a big fan of more light actually, so I would urge us to consider seriously pumping up the wattage on these things, around intersections particularly, because I think that's important and, again, hard to measure impact of safety, but the better people can see, I think, the more chance of you avoid accidents. So I would urge us to look back carefully again, particularly in intersections or crossing crosswalks and those kinds of locations where there are opportunities for accidents. So again, great project.
Thank you, thank you, John, thank you, Bob, for doing this, Happy New Year, Bob, it's nice to see you again.
Thank you, you too.
I, I think for, for me, Andrew, you, you brought up Oregon Road, which is a huge factor for me, I drive that and sometimes, I mean, it's, it's so crisp and so bright and like when I'm coming home from Walgreens and I go that way and then I hit Southborough and it's like, it's so hard to see specifically on a rainy night. So I like that if they're more energy efficient, I like that there's a savings to the taxpayers, but there's also a saving to the environment as well. So I, I appreciate all the work you've done on this, it's something that certainly needs to be done. I mean, I have a light literally at the end of my driveway, so it'll be a little more crisp and a little bit more brighter, but that's okay ultimately, so thank you.
Chelsea, hey, thank you, Bob and John, for bringing this forward, great slideshow and I think you've included a lot of information here. I do, do have one question I think might be for John. On slide six where it has the nine hundred and fifty-six lights stroked out, were those all assumptions that for every fifty watt, it would go to nineteen and three thousand? You're going to actually have to go through light by light to determine if that is the correct amount and what other input, I guess, would you be looking for in that? Would you be looking to talk to police department and see if there's a high occurrence of accidents in that area? And that would drive a different decision, kind of what's your thought on that?
But look what you're saying there, so six forty-three goes on fifty to nineteen, so people went down seventy goes to nineteen and the people only goes to forty-one. So it looks like you've gone through deciding what you think is the right one.
There, I, I spoke to Chris Collins of Energy Conservation, Inc., we use him for a lot of projects, the Green Community stuff, and he highly recommended the nineteen, especially for your standard roadway ones.
Yeah.
Simply because it's going to give you the more light and as you saw, these are all nineteenth, we put up as samples, they're not overflowing. To take anything left of that,
Yeah.
you're kind of darkening up the road more than I believe would be in the best interest of safety for pedestrians and auto drivers. We, we want to make sure, and again, I would by all means talk with Chief Newell.
Yeah.
And again, I would reach out to Chris as well on this, normally I would reach out to Mrs. Galligan, but Mrs. Galligan's not going to be available for this event.
Yeah.
So I would probably be working with the new superintendent as well. And again, I can speak with Crystal Lloyd down there, he's very familiar with the streets, and Dean Sibelli as well.
So I guess what I was asking, Kathy Moore, is like out of the six hundred and forty-three that are fifty, should any of them be the forty-one three thousand instead of the nineteen? That's, I'm just, I'm trying to understand with the methodology, is to, is this all assumption that it would be a one-for-one ratio or one-for-one transition? And what's the process to just make sure that that is truly what it should be?
But, so to be clear, just take the fourth one down, you're saying there's two hundred and forty-one currently, hundred watt. I don't know what HPS is, so I guess sodium, high-power sodium, okay? You were suggesting our key is that we go to forty-one watt?
Yep.
Three K, right?
That basically a good rule of thumb is we go down about half of the wattage.
That's.
That's generally a good rule of thumb.
But that's assuming that what we have there currently is what it should be.
The ones that you show up there now are, you know, if we have a spot that's sticking out, to your point, if we talk to Ryan or if, you know, Dean says to us, I've got this location, it's always been a little bit dark. Like when I'm coming upwards over the causeway, outside of the ones we add as a sample, there's an LED there, it's like right on the entrance to Route Nine. In my opinion, it's way too bright, that's not one of my samples, that LED, it was one that I put up a long time ago. That's when I would reduce the wattage, I'm looking to go, what are we lighting up New York City here with more light?
Maybe that's what I should have said, is the opposite, is if any of the two forty-one hundred were automatically put at forty-one, make that go back down.
Maybe you'll bring them down even more, yeah.
I just want to make sure that's the methodology.
Asking John to review all nine arcades lights to make sure they're running now.
I think we, I, I guess what I'm asking is, do we know that there's areas that have been problematic or that people have complained about? I, I don't, I mean.
I, I think that's the question, yeah, and a lot of.
What I can do is I, when I first started this process with the sample, I did meet with Karen Allen and I asked, I said, Karen, give me a good intersection. I said, I want one that's dark, I want to see it lights up. And I think it was Woodbury and Woodland maybe, and we put one there, it's beautiful. It's, it's the right wattage, that nineteen is perfect, it's lit, I took pictures of before and after, you're hard-pressed to tell the difference. It's like, that's a good light and that's the goal with this, I am very happy to say, we put up these samples, most people didn't realize or, normally when you change from LED, you start getting phone calls, you know, there was nothing.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Yeah, they look wider.
I would say that's, that's the difference with the three K versus the four K. Four K looks a little more like a shop light in a garage and the three K looks a little more like you would see in a, in a residential home.
If you're looking on the pole, you can tell it's an LED, if you're looking on the ground, you are going to be hard-pressed to tell the difference. That three thousand Kelvin is a huge difference from the four thousand.
Yeah.
Play before Chelsea's asking, do we think we know from calls we've gotten from, who have complained enough that we think that whatever is there today is okay, and we're just going to convert it like you say here?
Pretty much, if there's complaints, we would, and Bob, I, I, am I reading you right from our conversation? Say we put something up and we don't like it, National Grid can change it to a different form. Now, we don't want them coming back doing a hundred lights. But if there's a few lights and all of a sudden it's like, no, it's too much or it's not enough, can you take care of it? And that's generally.
Yes, we can.
The goal is to get it done in advance, you know, we want to do our diligence first.
Yep.
And don't be like getting new cars.
So I guess who would be, I mean, I, I'm guessing that, I mean, police would be a good source, right? And probably through some of Marty's work, probably having a, a, a list of, or Destin's work, probably have a list of a few athletic areas, so I just would, would want to make sure that there's flexibility within these numbers and that is the general direction. Okay, okay, thank you.
No problem.
So the advantage of going last season, I'm fine with designing, totally supporting this. Excited about those saves, we've got such a bunch of problems.
It's nice savings, I'm not going to lie, it's a nice number. And I will say one other thing, the relationship the town has with National Grid is amazing. Like I reached out to Steve Spazie over at the, Neil Spazie, sorry, the fire department. And he cannot say enough nice things about Bob and National Grid as well. When we are in crunch time around here, National Grid is here for us. We rely on them and they serve us well. So anything we can do to support this relationship and keep it going, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you for that, and I would echo, I would echo that Southborough is a good community to work with, so.
So Marty and, you guys want to come on, you want to say, I see you want to say something. It's just hard to hear because you're not going to take as hard as it is. It's good to see you all. Sorry, why please?
Yes. Absolutely, she's excited. So this is, I think this is great. It's great that, that we're talking about it, I, I like most of what I see, so that's, that's the goodness. It's going to save the town a ton of money, it's going to help the environment and it's going to dramatically be better than something else we might have put in there that had gobs and gobs and gobs of blue light. That was my big spiel, right, the lighting bylaw and all that, the lights were damaging. There is more blue, here's my one visual there, I can pass this around, but high-pressure sodium is at the bottom, so if you just. So we're, we're going to be adding blue, I think that's important. Even though they're three thousand Kelvin, we're going to be adding a lot of blue to the town, but there's still blue light in the three thousand K. The lighting bylaw suggests anywhere from twenty-two hundred to three thousand K. So actually this puts us at the very upper limit of how much blue we would, you know, we would want.
Can I just ask, is there more blue in what we have now?
Much less, yeah, so if you want.
It's much less, yeah.
Less right now, yeah. So even though we're getting the energy savings and all that stuff, if we put, you know, four or five thousand Kelvin in there, there are gobs of blue, that's that big blue peak that you see on that one. Three thousand, and that's a twenty-seven hundred that's on the sheet, three thousand has a little bit more than that blue peak. So we're actually adding a lot of blue to town and I think it's important. One of the ways that that can be mitigated is to decrease the wattage. The lower the wattage, the less blue light we're putting out. One of my concerns is not necessarily the, it's, it's the blue light going in the environment, but it's, blue light has higher energy, it scatters blue. One of the things that's super bad about the four thousand K LEDs and higher, especially given driving conditions, is it's got tons of glare. The bulb glares, it glares off the surfaces and it can actually, like, it's sort of like when you're driving down the highway and there's somebody coming at you with their high beams on and you can't see anything because, because of the glare. So there's, you know, we, we can, we can mitigate some of that, but there is going to be glare and driving by, took a tour and I actually was one of the, you know, I noticed right away that the news was going in and all that, and actually said to myself, you know, in the scheme of things, I've seen much, much, much worse in terms of streetlights. I think to me, as someone who's looking for that stuff, there's a lot more glare on these lights. You can notice it at the ground level because it's just, it, it looks brighter. What happens is we've got two different types of vision, we've got daytime vision which uses one type of cell, we've got nighttime vision which uses another. For driving, we actually use a mix of both, it's called mesopic vision. And the older we get, the more sensitive we are to road glare, that's why oftentimes we have to limit our, our nighttime driving, the older we get. Our eyes are super sensitive to blue and that's why if we put streetlights up there and we're blue, it's going to make those that are more sensitive, especially for having difficulty nighttime driving, it's going to be more difficult. I'm one of the people that's actually more sensitive to, to glare naturally, so I, I tend to, to pick up on it right away. So that's, that's something to keep in mind, brighter is not necessarily better when it comes to road safety and driving. These lights are going to have more blue, they do have more glare. Bob was talking about how the high-pressure sodium have a, a cowling, they have a covering and all that stuff, it helps to reduce flare. If you, one way to notice is if you're driving down and across the causeway, you just look up at the bulbs and you'll notice they're actually quite nice from a distance. When you get near the, where the light path is, if you look up at the bulb, they're, they're bright, you're catching that glare and they're much brighter than a high-pressure sodium would be if you're right underneath it. And, you know, that's not something that's, you know, you're not looking up at the bulb when you're driving, right? Yes, exactly right, but that, that increased glare you see on the bulb also scatters off the ground. So there's going to be more glare with the, with the LEDs than there is with the high-pressure sodium. It's not dramatic, but you can decrease that with decreased wattage. The science on this right now, so the American Medical Association and the International Dark Sky Association have settled on twenty-two hundred Kelvin, twenty-seven hundred max, and so they're sort of backing off of three thousand, this is the main reason, because it's still damaging the environment, but it's, it's, it's got more glare, the higher you go. One, their other piece of advice actually has to do with, with wattage, it's very difficult to, to, to compare apples to oranges, the high-pressure sodium is a total different technology, LED, right? And Bob, you, you guys were right, right on the mark and it's one of the things I like about it is, in particular, if you look at the, the fifteen watt option, it's right online with what's recommended by American Medical Association, the IDA, in that there's a two-to-one ratio in lumens. That if you, if you have about half the lumens of an LED that's in the three thousand K, twenty-seven hundred range, you get about the same as you do with the, with the streetlight. I think the ones that we've got on the causeway are brighter than the, than the high-pressure sodium. Doesn't mean that they're bad, but I can tell that they're brighter, it's not obnoxiously bright. But I think if we had an opportunity to compare the nineteen watt versus the fifteen. But I think if we had an opportunity to compare the nineteen watt versus the fifteen in Cambridge, in Pepperell, in Wellesley, everybody chose the fifteen.
Which three towns again? Cambridge, Wellesley?
Yeah, Wellesley and Pepperell. Pepperell, the most recent one, where they actually took lights in a town square and they put a spread out for them. And they chose the, the yellowest one and they chose the one with the lowest wattage. One of the things to keep in mind is when you're driving, it's one thing, but particularly in residential neighborhoods, our eyes adapt to the dark. We, we, we're first driving out, we think brighter is gonna allow me to drive better, but it's not because of glare. But also, once you're on the road and you're driving for a while, your eyes adapt to that light and you can get by with much less light, which means much less glare. But my, my strong recommendation to the board, strong recommendation would be, if you're gonna have the choice, I wouldn't put anything above the fifteen watt in, in residential areas.
John, the reason you recommend a nineteen versus fifteen is you thought fifteen might wear out?
No, no. After speaking with Chris Collins of Energy Conservation, he recommends generally you take the wattage and you wanna cut it in half of what you currently have as the standard rule that they use when they're doing the street lighting project. And if you have a fifty watt, half of that's twenty-five, nineteen is closer to twenty-five than fifty. You're talking considerably less. I mean, again, this is one of those things to the point I, I mentioned when we started the conversation. Some people like moral brightness and others don't. As Destin has mentioned, he's, he's naturally sensitive to it. So of course, he's going to prefer a lower wattage. Where I think you would find just as many people before the greater wattage to be able to see better. You can do fifteen. And it's gonna save a lot more money too, according to the, you know, numbers. But, but like I said, though, in those towns that have converted, and I, 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 I see what you're saying. And I'm not, you know, the best test case because of my eyes, but the towns almost invariably choose when they, when they put it out for public comment and they have them choose, they choose the lowest wattage. They like the dim lights. A lot of it is because it, it, it's, it's where you're at. It's the illumination that you need. It's adjusting your eyes. It's not walking, it's not driving past it or walking past it. Spending a little bit of time under it and saying, this is, this is fine, especially when you're comparing it to high pressure sodium in the residential neighborhoods. I think the nineteen watt's gonna generate more complaints. If there is an option for somebody to say across the causeway, you're not gonna look up at the bulb, but if you do, it's like, yeah, I can see that that's bright. It doesn't count on. When it's outside your house and you can look out of your window and see the bulb, that's gonna be a difference. So that's where I think, and you know, decrease the issues of, of, of more glare and more blue by decreasing the wattage. It's interesting because the, the science is sort of shifting. Is it, is it better for us to go three thousand Kelvin or lower to decrease the blue or is it better to go three thousand Kelvin and decrease the wattage to go? The truth is, we can do both. And so, you know, I think that, that we're gonna do this. It's gonna be great. It's gonna save money. But I think we need to be careful. We're gonna do this once. We can go and tweak, you know, this light or that, but we're not gonna be able to have a whole scale change over the streetlights. And this is the single biggest lighting impact we are gonna have on the town, period, in a lot of years. This is the last. Would it be possible to get a few fifteen watt samples?
Of course, yeah. Just let us know the poll numbers that you want us to do this on and, and we can do that.
I think if you, if you can let folks know, you know, here's, here's a fifteen watt, here's a nineteen, so that they can see it. I think, I mean, the, the forty-one watt scares me. Those are bright, very bright.
Ninety-six watt, they have ninety-six watt and they're actually two hundred and ten watts for highways. Yeah. So the. Yeah.
It's, it's crazy bright.
National Grid is given towards between nineteen and fifteen, but we're not being given a choice of one hundred and three thousand.
Well, they don't have it. Kelvin, but I guess it's, it's not something we can.
Did, was the standard then three thousand now is up and down?
We, when we did our work, our, we saw that, that, that we were issuing a range. And so in the bylaw, it says twenty-two hundred to three thousand. And I think Bob, you were the one that we, that Karina had talked to when we were doing the bylaw, right? And you had told us that we, we think we can do the, the three thousand K in the tariff agreement.
The tariff.
Were on the market, becoming available, all that stuff. Now the twenty-seven hundreds are, are available and twenty-two hundreds are available.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's been a little bit of a challenge as we've adapted to LEDs. The, the technology continues to change pretty quickly and the costs continue to come down, which is good. Even, even to the point where the LED facility charge, the rental charge is lower than the rental charge on the sodiums that are out there too. So. So it, it is, it is, it is kind of a challenge to keep up to it, but you know, I, I'm not sure I could commit to National Grid getting a, a twenty-two hundred or twenty-three hundred, twenty-seven hundred Kelvin light on the tariff, you know, on the menu for a number of years. You know, it's just, that process takes a long time and I, I think sitting at three K, that's a good compromise from, you know, at, at least in terms of what the process involves for us to get to get a new item on a tariff. And that makes sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And I think given that, it's that much more important to think about lower wattage to, to mitigate a lot of blue adding to the town.
I, I would offer one other, one other element that we didn't talk about, but John and I have talked a little bit about is that we are required in the tariff to provide louvers or visors that we would install if, you know, if glare is too much on an individual. And I, I've had it happen. I've I've had people call, you know, after the light was changed and you know, when it was sodium, the light was just kind of ballooning out and it was, it wasn't bothersome. And when we put the the new light in, the, the photometrics are much sharper and it, it came into this gentleman's bedroom window and he's, he says, look, I'm, I'm right up close to the street and you know, it's, it's keeping me up at night. What can you do? And, and what we did is we put a little bit of a shield just around the backside, you know, and we can, it's, it's about a hundred and twenty degrees and we can locate it anywhere around the the underside of the fixture to, to assist with glare and you know, shielding. So we, we do have those. It's, it wouldn't surprise me if we get a dozen or so requests as we are doing this project to put some of those up. So that's just another option for you to, to keep in mind as, as a glare reduction strategy.
Yeah, absolutely. Where, did, did you ever discuss controllers? To be, so, so there are, there are options on some streetlight models where you can have a controller where post factor, you don't have to change the entire thing out. You can tune down the water.
Again, the technology continues to change and, and, and that's one we have not adopted within the tariff yet.
Yeah, because I think Pepperell is ever source and the lights they got have controllers on for those. So, I mean, as long as, as long as National Grid's willing to come out and swap out a fixture, if, if it is to, right, then that's an option for the town, as long as.
But your recommendation would be the fifteen watt. They can't go above the three K, so we can't, so that seems to be the.
Wattage is the only way to do it. Yep, yep, yep.
Kathy, I think, I'm a fan of light. On the other hand, I think that, again, I have confidence in John others that he would consult with to make sure we've got the right amounts of residential areas, maybe the fifteens are the one that makes sense. I would fan on the causeway, for example, that crazy things happen there and the pedestrians and strollers and all that. So. I'd like to have as much light as possible in places like that. So if people see yeah, better. And I'm happy to intercept a little bit of glare. I'm clearly glare sensitive. The ones I've looked at that have been installed so far really haven't bothered me. So you may be more sensitive than I am.
Yeah, they're not, they're not so bad.
But again, sort of as I think John, you're likely to do, to look at the circumstances for each light. And if you need, if you can get away with less wattage, that's fine.
And again, we'll get the samples of the fifteens. Let's take a look at them, see what they look like. And the same point on the causeway too. Most of the poles in towns, every other pole has a light. The causeway is every third pole. So you're definitely gonna want a little more wattage to get a little more light.
What I'd like to see is the two hundred and sixty watt.
Sight at all.
Where are those?
So bring out that one. Look out the window, you can see where I'm at. So John, I, I only heard the back end of it, but you mentioned that there was one light that wasn't part of the, the samples that's in there. So there's one, there's one light. I'm wondering if it's the same one. There's one light that's on the north side of the Route nine overpass. I think you're right there, actually, right at the entrance. On the, on the north. Okay, good.
That is not our sample.
Because I've been driving by that one for a month and I tell my wife every time. But when I saw the other ones, wow, I'm like, those are, I think those are different. So that's, that's good.
And I think one of the important things is too, is we have to be consistent. And one neighbor wanting one light, one neighbor wanting it different, I think that's gonna be more distracting than glare for the guys. Is every other light not different? I think we need to strive for consistency.
I agree.
As much as we can. And there will be that exception. And I think we clearly need to accommodate that. But overall, whatever choice we make, we could just try.
I, I think with that, as when the six forty-three comes in, those are mainly gonna be your neighborhood lights. And to Lisa's point, what we choose for one neighborhood, you should choose for all the neighborhood. You don't want it being a, a patchwork both of them.
But there is a hybrid option. So if you did choose like the fifteen watt, you could do the nineteen watt on the causeway. You could do this kind of range. And there's nothing, like, I'm just thinking about very low lid, current residential streets that are fine, that are scenic, like true scenic roads. I know we're trying to make the change and to make them all scenic. But those scenic roads, I'm thinking, you know, I can't even, like, not flag, yeah, flag is very, I mean, it, it is a, a very major thoroughfare in the fact that people use it that way, but it's still a scenic road. That's something that I think would be testing. These lights might be a good option if we look, put a fifteen and a nineteen for people to compare on, on more of those streets or on, on Main right now where you have some nineteen. Fifteen, you can actually see the side by side.
Okay, but what we can do is turn this into. Well, like, yeah, fifteen first nineteen and then make a decision, right? I can tell you, I know we're always too dark. So I think we need this to help. So we gotta figure out a way to not let this turn into, everybody wasting.
Yeah, and, and if I can just offer a, a cautionary comment, having dealt with streetlights in, you know, many dozens of towns, streetlights are very, very emotional. People really feel connected to the lights that are in front of their house and they will, they will come to you with opinions and, and John knows this and the DPW knows this and you, you will get comments, you will get feedback. So I, as someone who does this with communities in, in, in many areas, I, I think the idea of being consistent is, has a lot of value when it comes to being questioned or challenged about what the streetlight policy is. My two cents.
Bob, do you think that the, because ev- everything I'm, I'm, I'm hearing from IDA and AMA and all that stuff would say that the fifteen watt is the closest analog to the HPS that we have? Is that your appraisal as well? Because the nineteen to me seems brighter, slightly brighter than the HPS. And the fifteen is what's recommended by IDA to replace HPS.
Yeah, I guess I probably not qualified to comment or challenge the IDA, but yeah, as a, as a resident in a community that's changed some of these over, the, the lower wattage is more comfortable to me. I too, John, I'm sensitive to the glare and, and the lower wattage is good. And, and these streetlights are markers, you know, as you drive these streets regularly and I, I'm not a fan of the really, really bright lights either. I think, I agree with the fifteen.
Sorry. I just wanted to ask, how long will it take to get a couple of these fifteens installed in town? Just so we have a better timeframe reference?
Probably within thirty days. If, I mean, if you, if you ask for six or eight of them, I could probably get them up within, within two to four weeks.
Thank you. So if you could commit to that, we could put this back on our either first or so we got February seventh and February twenty eighth. I can't remember the dates, right? So we can put it on one or the other. So we can wrap this up. Cause I'd like to see this wrapped up.
We need to wait for that to wrap it up. Yeah. Seems if you wanna go ahead, the question is what lights do we use?
Worth of pleasure. I would support. They should use a fifteen watt wherever John believes it will be okay. He's giving three towns and he's fifteen watt and as well as the Pepperell and. Do you have three that use nineteen or?
It's, it's not necessary that they're using fifteens. That when they were given a spread of wattages, they always picked the lowest one. I know that Pepperell is using fifteens. They have controllers on them. And the last I talked to, the Massachusetts chapter of IDA, they tuned them down with their controllers to twelve watts. So they even tuned them dimmer than the fifteen. And that's where they, they, they settled that everybody. And what we can do again is once these samples are, locations are determined and we get them up, I will email them again. You go look at them. It's one thing to open it to eleven thousand voices, five voices, we can listen to and say, what are you, what's your feedback on it? Be honest with you.
It seems to me the question is first, do we want to do it? And if we want to do it, then, you know, find a sensible way to do it with John, others providing input. I don't see that we have the weight.
Who wants to wait? Who wants to go ahead tonight? Anybody want to go ahead tonight?
Okay, so, so we go ahead tonight and then you would put up a sample of fifteen and nineteen, then the idea is you don't need an answer for this right now to start going.
If the fifteens are good, we'll go with the fifteens. I have no objection to it as long as we feel the lighting is good.
So is there any safety concern from a fifteen to an, that's my only concern on the fifteen is, are there certain intersections that should be a nineteen? I'm not opposed to the fifteen. I just, I don't know the answer.
Well, that's why I asked Bob about his, if his appraisal matches with IDAs and the AMA, for which one of these is closest to an HPS what people have now? And the fifteen seems to be the answer. So I would expect that, you know, I mean, the IDA and AMA and me and Bob, that the fifteen is, is not gonna be any worse than the HPS.
Yeah, and the only, the only thing that I would offer here is that, and, and it's, it's right in the tariff. I can almost read you the language back. It's says National Grid makes no warranty or representation as to the adequacy or appropriateness or selection of light style, wattage or location. So that's basically an out that says the town has to tell us where they want the lights. And like I say, I know towns that have twenty-eight lights in the whole town and I know towns that have twenty-seven hundred. So it's entirely up to the town. You tell us where you want the lights, tell us what size and style and, and we'll put them there.
How about that? Cause two of, two, I think, one to see the comparison. Why don't we vote tonight to approve the concept? We want to do this.
Yeah.
Okay. We want to do it. And then let's, let's have public safety have a chance to weigh in here and then basically decide on fifteen versus nineteen at one of the February meetings, once we know we've got a chance.
I think that makes sense. And then in the placement of where you put these, can you put them in some kind of different locations? One along, well, Travel Street, it's almost like there, one in a more residential subdivision.
Yeah, I would definitely want to make sure we get an intersection or two in. Yeah. And like, kind of like the Woodbury and Woodland, again, because that worked really well. So I want to see a fifteen would look there. So we can, we can try to move around and to Marty's point, we could do like one or two down, make sure we already have a nineteen. So you can see a side by side comparison. You know, we're gonna try to be as local with it as we can.
And one in a quiet residential neighborhood where they can get a lot going on to sort of evaluate the local impact.
And actually, believe it or not, the backside of the summit here is a great road. Do samples on, I almost did these ones on it because there's nothing there. And sometimes a dark road is a great place to look.
Into my driveway.
Anything else you want?
No, I, yeah, I fully support the LED conversion. I think it's the right thing.
That's great. And so appreciate you coming tonight. It's so helpful. Yours. So I don't know that we need to, we, we know we want to do this, okay? And we'll take the official vote once we look at the fifteen versus nineteen. Give you what you need to, the letter and the spreadsheet. Give me what you need to, the letter and the spreadsheet and maybe off to the list.
Okay. Very good. Thank you all. Nice to see you. Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you. It's, uh, it's great to be here. Yeah, well, thank you. Uh, I, I'd like, uh, presenting. Hi, uh, good evening. Uh, Rob Anderson, uh, the Chair of the Economic Development Council, joined, uh, tonight by my Vice Chair, Alan Von Neack.
Travis.
Um, I do like presenting in person. Also, uh, sometimes where, uh, PowerPoints are good, I, I oftentimes like speaking extemporaneously and a, a bit off the cuff. I think it gives a little bit more character to both me and what we're talking about. So we do not have a PowerPoint presentation, but I would like the opportunity to talk a little bit about the EDC, um, how our past year has been and how we kind of view things going forward as, uh, a community and our intersection with lots of the other boards and committees for the town. So, um, as people in town might be aware, and the Select Board is as well, um, we had our, uh, part-time Economic Development Co- Coordinator, Marika, leave at the end of the fiscal year. So we have been working without, uh, an admin, without, uh, any assistance since that point in time. It is for volunteer board somewhat, um, troublesome to, to keep that momentum going. Uh, especially when we had someone like Marika who was making, uh, great efforts and great strides for things like grant applications and outreach to businesses, things that we would like to continue that are kind of on our list of objectives for the year going forward. Um, and, uh, to that end, one of the things that we're thinking about this calendar year is having a placeholder contract role for, uh, Claire Reynolds, who has been with the, uh, the EDC in a variety of different roles, uh, variety of years. We want to keep that momentum going because there are certain things, um, uh, bubbling, at least in Massachusetts with the new administration and a focus on both housing and economic development as twin pillars to, uh, communities, taking that next step towards, uh, sustainability. And that's kind of, uh, business and economic development sustainability. And, and you know, one of the things that we discovered with, uh, Marika and her grant applications is that not all of the grants out there are for economic development. There are lots of other grants out there for a variety of different initiatives. Uh, I, we just heard people talking about, uh, to bring communities and replacing LED lights. That's an initiative built off of, uh, grant application in the past. There's the municipal, uh, vulnerability preparedness, MVP grant, that was applied for in the past. There are grants out there that can be researched and can assist people just beyond the Economic, um, Development Committee. So one of the things that, uh, we want to see going forward and one of the initiatives and goals that we have, uh, to marry up a little bit with our neighboring communities is a transition from just a full, uh, a, a part-time role, simply dedicated to economic development, to one that is encompassing to all of the other boards and committees. One that takes on board, uh, a grant application element that can allow us to maintain our economic development initiatives, but also provide value to the other boards and committees that are out there that might not have the bandwidth like the EDC, um, has for its volunteers, to make sure that we don't leave anything on the table that could improve the quality of life for residents. So we've taken some, uh, steps for a job application, working out a, a, a budget. And I think I'm going to have Alan talk a little bit about, um, the role, the steps that we've gone and the steps that we still need to go through on that.
Great. Thanks, Rob. Um, so Marika, as you know, is working part-time, used on paper. Um, the reality is she was putting in more than that. She was really dedicated to the role. We're going to miss her for that. But one of the things we're missing is not just the nineteen and a half hours, is the nineteen and a half, half hours loss was the additional research on those brands and things that she did. So as we're thinking about the right kind of talent to attract for a full-time role, we were thinking, as Rob alluded to, was what if half of this full-time role is like much of what Marika was doing as the part-time coordinator? But the other balance of that role is a grant writer, researcher, seeker, funder, administrator supreme, but not just for EDC, but every single other board, committee and department within the town that could benefit from it. We know that there are some boards and committees that are successful in getting grants and that's, that's great, fantastic for them. But then we know there are others that could use that as some of that assistance. We've actually, at a previous meeting, to kind of volunteered to do some outreach, we kind of said, hey, do we think this board or could this committee or this department could use that help? And we started that outreach because based on our experience, we thought there are some that could benefit from that. So the idea would be roughly half that time would be spent helping to research that, which means that that would be bringing in additional money to support what, yes, we do realize would be an additional increase in salary for a role like this. As Rob alluded to earlier, we looked at some other local towns, um, are, and cities are dealing. And this is, this is a role that's consistent with, um, roles with towns, excuse me, and cities that are bringing in that kind of grant assistance to fund the kinds of programs to keep you near full. And so again, uh, just in summary, the idea would be that we were looking at a role that's some, that would be a community, um, development coordinator. Um, there might be a different, um, name in sort of the agenda, because we were kind of going back and forth with the, the description, the job description. Um, to be clear, it would be one full-time position, not a full-time and a part-time. I think we may have, may have potentially confused people. We're not looking at multiple roles, we're looking at the, 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 the augmentation of the existing part-time to a full-time role. Um, so with that, I'll hand it back to Rob to, to chat about some other things that this role might be able to help us do.
Yeah, a- and whereas there are those, uh, goals that can assist other committees, I, I think it's important to note some of the, uh, initiatives and goals that the ED set, EDC has on its own. Obviously fulfilling the, um, goals laid out in the master plan, which received an awful lot of a constructive input from everyone in the town. Those are great goals to go for too. But in thinking about some of those things that are on our radar, that are of importance to us, particularly given the, uh, the limited commercial capacity in the town, is a focus on Route nine and where some, uh, coordination with the planning board and rezoning could be useful for some level of, uh, new construction and commercial growth in order to increase the amount of commercial, uh, property tax revenue that we have coming in and help keep the residential property tax low. I, I think coming up with a, a, a policy and a standard for, um, incentives so that, um, should the right opportunity arise, we already have some, uh, paths laid out for, a flow chart, as it were, to make sure that we are, when we're having those conversations, that the Economic, uh, Development Committee, the, the Community Development, uh, Coordinator role can kind of speak to those and say, this is what we can bring to the table because we want you, we want this business here. I, I think it would be, um, eh, I would be doing a disservice to the EDC and our, um, kind of discussions if I didn't recognize that, uh, infrastructure is something that is vitally important, that is putting us at a, uh, it's putting us behind the eight ball compared to some of our other communities along the Route nine border, particularly as, um, the, uh, life science industry, um, the medical device industry spread out of Boston. And, and you know, when we're thinking about that infrastructure and we're thinking about incentives and we're thinking about ways in which that Community Development Coordinator can take that lead role. I think, um, one of the things that can be very useful to have that full-time position in that role, applying for grants and talking with the other departments is helping to streamline the permitting process. Like, I, I, I believe that there are many communities out there that have pre-permitting meetings of department heads to set the, uh, course forward for the developer, so that when they come, uh, forward to the planning board, they know about some of the, the lighting requirements, that when they're talking with conservation, they know about the wetlands buy and lost. Those things that can prepare them for a quicker turnaround in the permitting process. And so those things can happen with a part-time role. Um, I believe that they, I, I, to speak for the EDC and we voted to, um, put forward in the budget a full-time role. We believe that the town could see some significant benefit by having someone dedicated to the grant writing on behalf of the town and economic development. And that is one of the goals, um, for us going forward. So I know I've spoken a lot about our goals, what those are and kind of how we're hoping to address some of them going forward. And so without saying too much more, um, I'd, uh, thank you for the time to present. Uh, Ellen and I are here to answer any questions.
So, um, we truly wish you guys being here. So as you may know, Select Board selects gold every summer. Uh, and this year, um, I believe Andrew Dinnington and Sam Cyrus were assigned two people, um, basically working with EDC to help EDC do this job, et cetera. So I want to turn this over to, um, Andrew, um, for the moment, um, as far as what you'd like to do, you know, and as far as this discussion going.
Well, that's good, because also I think there's one, could you just speak to the point of, um, the, the job description you have and what, depending on actually, they're looking at the Select Board this evening and how that relates to the, the budget timeline comparing with the general.
I, I failed to cover that in my description, so thanks for the reminder. So, um, working backwards from town meeting and when things need to be submitted into the warrant and such like that, the way the process works, I believe in working my conversations with Barry and Personnel Board is they, the Personnel Board has a meeting on January ninth. If, um, the way the process typically works is whoever the, um, approving authority is for the position, in this case it's the Select Board, approves a draft working job description that gets submitted to Personnel Board, Personnel Board reviews it, discusses it. If that's approved there, it then goes into, I believe it's called reading, where it gets figured out for what the recommended salary would be. We've done some of our research just to help level set to understand what we're looking at and then they would, of course, we then slot it the right way. That then, then if that's approved, that if you guys approve what we're looking at as a, as a placeholder, that's the value that that will then go into town meeting. Now, we then get voted upon for funding. If it does not get funding, the position stops because the position needs funding in order to become a position. If it does get approved, then, um, I think it would get approved at whatever personnel ranks or rates in. So working, again, I started working back. First is, we would seek an action tonight worthy of what we described. We then, EDC is actually being tomorrow night, we'll then bring that update to our committee. And then January ninth, next week, we bring that to Personnel and have a single discussion. We just have a regular meeting, but we're also just going to update, um, the rest of our committee on what happens tonight, what the next step's like for that role. Um, some of our members know about, um, um, Marika not, um, being an option. First, there's going to update on, on about Claire, just everything. So just a regular.
Oh, we tried. We, we, we tried. We, we, we extended, um. I, I, I would have loved to have been the only town in Massachusetts that had someone working for us in Japan. It would have been, it would have been a nice little story, but. Uh, yeah, we're going to, uh, as, as someone who is the Chair with limited time, the amount of bridge that she will be able to help will keep the momentum going because there are certain things like, you know, uh, the downtown, which we'd love to like kind of re-energize. We have had a, a meeting with Peter Bemis, um, but we, we need that little bit of a, a bridge help to make sure we get there, um, because the one element that we don't want to do, and we, we've shared our job description with the Town Administrator's Office, the one, uh, thing that we don't want to do with a part-time role right now is get the, the wrong person in when it's transitioning to a full-time.
So, um, I'll just say a couple of things on why I, I support this and I think this is the right time to consider this. So right now, for, first off, Marika's departure was, um, kind of a sign, I think that we're, you're relying for a significant need on a part-time position that in the long run might not be all that sustainable. And, you know, we got the benefit of someone who was very local, a lot of energy, was really willing to work more than a member of our chief, um, was being paid for. So right now, for this fiscal year, we have in the budget, we're taxing people to support a, a, a part-time position that doesn't, is not filled and doesn't provide any benefit. So then I thought that for this fiscal year is the time to have this discussion. But there's three paths that they could take in bearing their budget. They could just say, well, there's, we haven't filled the part-time position, so we'll just take it up completely. I don't think anyone here thinks that's a good idea. Uh, the other is to just keep doing what they've been doing, keep it nineteen point five hours. Continue the search that has been so far unsuccessful, try to find a, um, right fit for that part-time position. Or to consider having it full-time, but also do it in a way that, you know, there's some service of this position to other boards and departments in town, because that's another thing that we want to stress. So I think it's worth, I'm, I'm very appreciative of uh, Rob and Alan putting this in the budget and bringing it for our discussion. There's certainly a series of steps they need to take sequentially in order to have it be considered. Um, it's unique and that it's a, obviously, I really appreciate it anytime you're considering adding a full-time position to the budget. That's a serious discussion that I have to think really carefully about. This is one that has at least the potential of a return on investment of the, the salary that you pay to move from a part-time coordinator to a full-time coordinator, maybe offset by some of the, um, savings generated by identifying grants that right now aren't being generated. Um, I just think that, you know, another thing that's been kind of a story of the last two budget cycles is this eighty twenty, like of the shift um, in our, the residential values are going up much faster relative to the commercial. So what are we doing? That's, that's one of the enormous headwinds, right? Because even if we keep, um, expenditures, no control, the fact that that eighty twenty number goes to be one, two, two, eighteen increases people's taxes. So what are we doing about this? I think that there's kind of a structural problem when you've been relying on this part-time position that it's just, uh, questionable sustainability. And, um, now is the time to consider, um, we certainly have some needs in town to try to, um, have better regular communication with businesses without relying exclusively on, uh, volunteers that already give a great amount of time. Of, you know, everyone in the EDC has, um, jobs that they, families and to, uh, to have someone that is really dedicated, takes pride on trying to, as Marika did, you know, having good relationships, developing good relationships with businesses, large, small settings. Um, schedule some of the regular meetings that we have, but, um, that, that have been scheduled, but after Marika left, it's just, they've kind of fallen off the, um, off the radar screen. So I know that, I understand there's probably going to be some, it's a serious discussion we talk about adding a full-time position. Um, because it adds benefits to the budget, et cetera, but I think it's worth really considering it. If we're going to say, well, it's not this year, I just, I just think that then you've got another fiscal year of those paths. Shouldn't we just keep the part-time position and know that it's, and just keep bridging and bridging? Where I think this is the year of the discussion.
I, I have a question that I found, I guess, one, just to clarify, um, you talk about need for infrastructure. My assumption is that means wastewater, like Route nine and, and downtown is another, is a related issue, but it's still wastewater there that I think opens up opportunities there. And, uh, Andrew stole my argument here, maybe. That, that to me, the structural issue is the key. And I think that, uh, we've got a structural budget issue that is represented by the inability to generate additional tax revenue out of Route nine particularly, to a much lesser extent downtown. But I think we need to do something to break that logjam, to be able to cap that. But I think we need to do something to break that logjam, to be able to tap that resource long-term. And it's not easy, it's not quick. But I think this position can at least allow us to make some progress toward that on several of these dimensions that Rob and Alan mentioned. So I, I think that it's an important investment. And again, the data anecdotal data I've gotten from talking with people in many other towns is that this is a position. That does generate a very positive ROI. If you get the right person in there, you can find money to do things. That, uh, did not have to come out of the backspace. I think that to me is, is a, like a great selling point at the workforce. So I strongly endorse this. I think that it's something that is long overdue to try to sort of break through your approach of changing structural dynamics and regeneration factor.
Well, and, uh, anecdotal as well, and, uh, Andrew mentioned this as well. It's the coordination with the business community. It's also the coordination internally. Someone here full-time every day can develop those relationships with, um, the, the Fire Chief, the Board of Health, the Planning Director. To make sure that everyone's on the same page, working together and, uh, bring the initiatives from the Town Administrator's Office and the Select Board to fruition. You know, so i- it's all kind of like getting everyone in the boat, uh, rowing in the same direction. And I, I think that's where this goal can be useful in addition to those, um, added, uh, returns on investment that come through some grant allocations of.
One, just to append something you said, where the position would be half, you know, grin, right? I mean, if, if the person was to be. Doing like what Marica did really more than half, more accurately, they wouldn't be spending more than nineteen point five hours actually. So I know that there's already, you know, department heads who do a great job of identifying brands that are in there. Within their departments, especially identifying and finding and getting them. But I still think that there's, we're within this forty yard position where there's some value that could be added for someone that's. Looking more broad, we could identify brand opportunities. We haven't. Considered before.
It, it was buried in a footnote in our budget, but it's worth mentioning. It was about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in twenty-four months that Marica was able to uncover and, um, produce for the EDC. And so it, we, it stands to reason that there's other grants available for boards, committees and departments beyond the EDC. That someone who's actually dedicating twenty hours a week can help administer and do those kinds of things. So.
And particularly in the current environment with the new state administration coming in, I think there's a lot of fluidity. In terms of state support programs that are going to change to some degree, given. The new governor's view of how that should be organized and structured and so forth. So I think the value of having somebody who's actually paying close attention to that. May find opportunities there and that others may invest, we might have a chance of getting farther ahead in line for these things that we've got somebody who's. Really spending a lot of time focusing on that. I think it's pretty good.
It, it's, it's the perfect time to have the conversation. And I think this, like, it's a conversation that we want to have. And we believe that, you know, the, the return that Marica provided to us is, um. Was valuable and we want to enhance it even more.
So to be clear, Sam and Andrew, before the three of us were in, you guys are recommending that we support this job description, um, effective just for your eighteen twenty-four, so it's seven one twenty-three. Um, so that the Personnel Board can then do, um, they're going to be giving on SAP for town meeting. Right? Okay.
And I, for example, I'd say, Andrew, that as well support the funding for the full-time position. It's part of my twenty-four budget. One small caveat, I guess, I'm inclined to call it the coordinator, Community Development Coordinator, so opposed to Director. For reasons that I already explained, I think that's going to be a friendlier type.
Yeah, I think, um, through various drafts and back and forth, working with, um, with Mark and Vanessa, and thank you for the help to. Get it to a spot where it's amenable to, to many, um, I think, um, community, um. Development coordinators that appropriate.
As you've suggested, facilitation, coordination is a key, um, which could not, um, general pattern style director.
Yeah, yes.
But I think that's one of the reasons too, that why I have that comment. Yeah, is because, you know, in, in my opinion, you know, I think it's more important, and I hate to jump in, point three people off comments, I apologize, but. I, I think it's important for the board to determine tonight whether you're willing as a group to support the position moving forward. You know, I think the job description, in my opinion, probably still needs some work and some coordination. Um, you know, there were some things I think that, you know, I suggested be added into the position that may not have been fully incorporated. And it still has more of a, of a, of an economic development focus and that. So. There's still some things that I think that need to be done, but the board, you know, um, beyond some of those things, I think Personnel Board is really going to want to understand. Is this something that the board is going to support funding for fiscal twenty-four? That they should then be taking this up. Quickly, so they can try to make sure that they get everything done in the SAP facility, um, effectuating that funding and moving forward in the hiring process. You know, when, you know, as soon as.
But can I go first? So I, I want to tell you guys a story that they've already heard this, uh, this week. So a few weeks ago, um, I met with some of the business team down at the point because they were also looking at the way we can only. Make three projects as far as working. So I met with two cases. And they were very nervous, but they were very pointed in the comments. And I left them two ways first. Um, it was my child. And, um, one of you, while I'm on the end, that was sitting with me, he came up one time, said Kathy. I told him we wanted to do so. Um, and it was infrastructure and too much risk to give, to give those scores out. So it's really, I mean, it was being definitely placed on him, you guys in the long term. And then, I'm sure. What was it? Um, then they, as far as, you know, was describing, um, what they had to do with their system systems far as now all. Um, because it's so small and it's a lot of just, obviously it's been really big since. I know. I mean, you're at all of that downtown, right? And we just can get, do all the work, get the. And still, um, it seems to be not a tape. So I'll let you begin. This really has gone to. Make sure that you see numbers, we are behind you. We really want to help you, help us, um, revitalize downtown, root line. Because we do want to, we want to base here in a way that makes sense to carry yourself. I feel one, when the town members look. They're really willing to do it.
Yes.
So I fully support all these efforts that you're making. And, um, I wavered on this, um, but. Andrew and Sam think that this is when you know, Sam's been talking about having a private board and lots of songs I've known. As far as this person comes in and works for us, we think that's a. Pretty big ROI, I think that that's probably something we all believe. And so, um. As long as it's for, right? So we can make some changes to it. Um, I think that.
Um, so I'm going to come from the other side. I think that, um, my fellow board members, uh, I'm struggling with. An EDC role, also supporting every other department and board of community in town. And I think there's significant overlap on. What is happening or maybe what isn't happening, but should be happening with. My bright hand over here. Um, and I, I think if we're going to look to do something like this, then we should be looking at. What hours are coming out of other jobs that should be doing it or are doing it, if that's the intent. Um, and I, I just, I think it's not flushed through. Um, I think that the way that you describe what Marica was doing is. Mu- more than the nineteen and a half hours. So are we really asking for a full-time EDC? Person and what's going to happen with the grant side? And when you apply for a grant, how are you going to operationalize it? I think we all heard. Learned a really hard lesson when we saw money sitting on the table. We applied for a grant, we got it quick, and then we failed to execute. Right? And we're still dealing with that eighteen months later. And I'm not going to go through that again and put somebody in a position where we're going to say, go find every grant that you can. And yet. The department head that is responsible for it is not involved in, or not that spear header of going for that grant. So I'm struggling with. What exactly do you think that we're missing? And is it really EDC-driven? Or what other boards and committees are you talking about? So. Trails, they go out and get all their own grants. They do a phenomenal, phenomenal job of it. They're all over it. You know, um, Board of Health, I'll use that as a dip. Uh, Board of Health just got a large grant to look at regionalization. Right? I think you have a lot of people who are in, initiating things on their own in town. And so I, I'm not understanding what exactly. You're looking for on the, on the grant side, um, that's going to enhance. I, I also, I'm having a hard time. With this being an EDC position supporting. DPW, who has a, a lot of work on their plate, how to, going after grants for them fit into this, you know.
Well, uh, uh, to, to your point, I, I might imagine that, uh, roadway paving, um, sidewalks. Are things that, um, in the normal course of business, those are things that they might do. However, um. In their full bandwidth, are there opportunities for culvert replacements? Uh, I tend to view economic development as a holistic, uh, means of improving the quality of life for all residents. So when there is a, uh, trail connection that could be made between the trails throughout the town to our downtown. And people then walk on those trails to our downtown to support the local businesses. Go to the markets to pick up a, a soda, go and pick up a, a, a coffee or a donut or something like that. There's an economic development issue to that. Housing is an economic development initiative that we should be trying to push as well. And does, um, shopsy? And are there opportunities to leverage the fact that we are now an MBTA community? Open up those chances for those grants for technical assistance, for other things that could fit into that whole. Wha- what I'm not saying is that from an EDC's perspective, that this person is going to do every grant. The thing is, there are so many out there that the identification can be something that they do. If they are going and taking a look at the community one stop for growth. And they come across a grant that is trail-specific. Bringing into the trails community, did you guys know about this? Is this something that you want to pursue? And they say, yep, we already know about it. We've already applied. That's something that we're doing. All of a sudden. It's, it's, they don't have to pursue it. Um, a- and, and I think that from the, the Economic Development, uh, Committee's perspective. We want to do a couple of things. Increase jobs, increase commercial tax revenue, increase the quality of life for residents. That is why this particular job is Community Development Coordinator, not just simply Economic Development Coordinator. So that there is a, um, holistic approach, which includes those things that are economic development related, like housing. Like recreation, like trails. That can kind of make South Row the town that we are proud of, where the, uh, businesses don't say infrastructure and red tape. If there is more beyond you being there because of a specific complaint about the downtown, but our EDC coordinator is down there every day. Finding about these things beforehand, there is a value to that so that they are not the, the peer-to-peer. Saying, don't come to my town. They're saying, hey, listen, uh, there are some hiccups, but we've got a team. Led by the Town Administration and the Select Board that wants to get this to happen. And that's kind of where we, I think. Speaking on behalf of the EDC as the Chair and some of the conversations we have, view this role not simply as another full-time position. Just to take the role and, um, take time away from some of those other boards, which may be, um, aware of those grants. So that's kind of how we're viewing that, to provide value to residents in, in that.
So. I just don't see that, that downtown concerns that Kathy spoke about. Is, should be the responsibility of this person. This is, this was related to projects. That we needed to be more ahead of from an operations standpoint, not from. I mean, it could, yeah, it could have helped, absolutely, but they're not going to have the details of the project management. I, there's project management in here, so I, I just. I think that there's, I have a lot more questions, um, related to this. I'm also not in favor of adding a position at this time with benefits. Um. So that's kind of, yeah, but thank you for.
Okay, Lisa. All right. Thank you. Thank you for, for doing the presentations. I, um. I have a ton of questions for you. I'll try to give these brief as I can, you know. Um, so I'm not sold today on this position being full-time for EDC. I think you've expressed some of my concerns tonight. We've talked about Andrew, who said repeatedly that nineteen and a half hours wasn't enough time, but we've also talked about this person doing grants half the time. So. What is it that EDC needs? Do you need a person more than nineteen and a half hours? And we, this board agrees, a grant writer is something we're all supportive of. It's, I don't want to make it. How we get to that person? I want to make sure we do it in an economical way that benefits everyone, including EDC. If nineteen and a half hours isn't what you need, then you need to tell us what you need. Adding a grant writer to do ten hours of grant writing and, you know, an additional eleven hours of whatever to. EDC, we should, you should be asking for what you need. So that's, that's one of my concerns. Um, has EDC voted and approved this job description? And what's in here specifically to the specific items and what we're looking for?
They have, EDC has not voted on it. We've discussed it as a committee and we have our meeting tomorrow night. It's in our packet to vote.
Okay. Um, I think changing director of coordinator, absolutely the way to go. Um, I worry a little bit about the overlap as well. Um, you know, I look at some of the key, key. Essential functions, excuse me. And there's overlap with, with shopsy. Shopsy's job is affordable housing. You know, they worked hard. They put a housing plan in place. Um, you know, they've just gotten staff to help them do, um, you know, advance what they need. They're working with planning board on the MBTA communities. Um, having EDC coordinate with housing developers on projects. That's really, in, in my mind anyway, it's overlap with, with the role that Shopsy does. Um, and I, I think Shopsy's going to be concerned about what their role is if we're given the role. I agree, EDC and housing have some hand in hand, but I think it should be working together and not bringing a coordinator in to coordinate the work of Shops. And that's why I need this, maintaining, strengthening relationships with the state. That's, that's a Shopsy initiative. And if we find that that's not taking place, then I think, then it's a bigger discussion on its own. But, um, that was one of the things I worried about. I worry about the dedicated time. How much time are we actually going to dedicate to grant writing? We don't know the answer to that today. We're saying nineteen and a half or twenty for each, but.
Well, no, actually it'd be a little bit less because some of the grant writing that was being done by Marica within nineteen point five hours was grant writing for EDC. So that would shift over to the grant writing role or the grant writing cap, which would free up whatever number of those hours were to do the balance of EDC work.
But Andrew said nineteen and a half hours, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, that you couldn't get done what needed to get done with. With, within the businesses and, um, setting up meetings and whatnot in that nineteen and a half hours. So how is. Still only having nineteen and a half hours, and, and a grant, she spent some time on grant writing. I completely get that. Um, but I can't imagine it was enough time to offset. Saying that we're still only nineteen and a half hours.
Well, I, I, I.
That's probably confusing.
No, no. A- and, uh, to, to answer those questions without the, the full, uh, committee here. I, I will say this, if we could do just a full-time EDC person, EDC only. We would. I, I think Marica, in her part-time role, was doing full-time work. Um, I think, like you all are, being cognizant of return on investment and value to the town. If there is the idea of a grant person. Is that a full-time job as well? Or is that a full-time role instead of an EDC person? Is that another part-time role? The idea of a, um, jack-of-all-trades, a Swiss army knife that can be utilized at the discretion of. The Select Board, the Town Administrator, the EDC, to address those needs as they come up, can be very useful. Because you don't always need the screwdriver. Sometimes you need the, the pliers. And oftentimes, it really helps when you have the wine opener. That's what I would say.
And, and I.
That's a joke.
And I, and I appreciate that. My, my concern is. This is the first time we're seeing this tonight. We're basically saying, okay, yeah, we're going to support this to go to, uh, Personnel Board. I, I'm, I'm just not there yet. I think there's a lot more questions that, that I have, you know, looking at the tax rate for the year. Um, you know, adding benefits, adding an employee, um, some of the other things, um, you know, I would like to see dedicated time to grant writing. You know, not just, well, if EDC has, you know, a forty hours this week and forty hours next week, but we, we can give twenty hours. But yeah, we can give twenty hours, some to grant writing. I think that defeats the purpose of of what we're trying or what I would support as far as a grant writer part uh half the time. Um. I guess those are are some of my general questions now. Um, I worry about uh collecting publishing use releases. Featuring, you know, accomplishments of the EDC and other departments. I view press releases as Mr. Purple's job. And he is the voice of the town. He he should be the face of the town that's that's putting out information such as that.
And and to that point. If the EDC uh the Community Development Coordinator is writing them and taking that burden off. Mr. Purple. For him to disseminate and get out to the press, wouldn't that be freeing him up for more? Uh, positive and and uh useful things to the town if you have someone working on his behalf? In his department to to do those press releases?
Potentially, I I I don't disagree with that, except there's two staff and the selectmen's department now that should be.
Should be formulated with Mr. Purple.
The role would report to to the town administrator.
Yeah.
So again, I just. I can, I I have concerns about, I think we're moving, I know we've talked about it enough a lot. But I think having something before us tonight and having to make a decision tonight without having the true. Um, budget picture for me is, it's just troubling and I'm I'm just not there yet, so.
So. Okay, um. See if we can find a common room.
Can I just respond to that kind of thing? So I I understand everything or. Every concern you raise, I just get back to. Of the three kind of paths, and if you think that there are other paths, please. Uh, let me know. Um, and they're thinking of their budget this year, twenty-four, where. Where you have a unfilled part-time position, it doesn't look like there's a reasonable prospect of it getting filled with the right type of. Fit that we wanted. It's. It sounded like there's maybe some support out there. I may be reading this wrong. For a full-time EDC coordinator position, but then. It's one of those positions that's right on the border line. It's probably more than nineteen point five hours, but. Are there other things that we've talked about for a long time that cross departments where? It would be nice to have someone, if it's not necessarily a planned position, where there could be some capacity for the person. To help out. I mean, the grant writer aspect of this job description is definitely, it's kind of experimental. This is, there's never been a job description like this before. It would. Uh, it could be tweaked over time, right? And I just think that. Uh, unless there's kind of a different path that doesn't make sense to cut off funding. I don't think it makes sense anymore to just fund it at a part-time position. And then, um. You know, every single budget's like, we face the same situation where it's always. A top year. And one of the things we're facing right now from last year is this, this um headwind with the shift, right? And it's, you're not gonna just press a button or snap your fingers and get that. Really been at least stabilized or reverse it. You're gonna need to make an invest of some sort, but really long-term initiatives. That, you know, you can have groups of volunteers that dedicate a lot of time to it, but it's just. It really helps to have someone who you have dedicated volunteer, but then you also have someone who is a. Full-time person who's really available to help you out and organize and keep things moving, so um. You know, there are just a sense you have, and there's sometimes these kind of unfilled needs where we should be making more of an investment to feel like this is. This is a time where we should be considering making this investment. I most likely be. Yeah, I'll just stop there. I think I've seen it with other positions over time. This is the time where we should.
Can I, so I kind of view it in two different ways. One is we have our current businesses who obviously we need to do more. Right, which I think Marika did some of that, but she she was more, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I I don't know everything that she did. But I think she coordinated a lot of meetings between EDC representatives herself. And planning, select board, like got a group together, right? Which obviously is coordination, takes a lot of time. Rather than maybe we're just pinging, you know, five businesses in town every month individually.
She 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 did do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And and I I think where it's sometimes. Once you have that meeting, then you set up the collaborative nature of it.
So I think that's gonna take us some time to maybe get back to the level that she was doing so that maybe we can. Get more information, um, like what Kathy men- mentioned on concerns that people have. And I think that's really, that's what we need, we need to stop the bleeding on businesses leaving. I think that's our number, well, I don't want to speak for you guys, but I think that's our, my number one priority in in terms of commercial business.
Yeah.
I don't want people to.
Yes.
Okay. So I think that should be the number one focus. Part-time, full-time, I don't care what role you put it in. I think that's what EDC needs to focus on right now.
Yes, I might, I might shift that slightly, um. Because we need growth.
I know.
And and it's, and it's, yeah, and and it's and it's not the jobs and the businesses leading, leaving, it's new construction. You you basically need to take the CAS building and rehab it to change the assessed value of it. You need to take the Andrea restaurant and the other building right beside it and change it. It's, they left sixteen years ago. What you need to do is see that um construction growth. And how do you do that? Well, it's that coordination with the zoning changes, it's the infrastructure. It's figuring out ways in which to get that um added wastewater to the downtown. And that takes time.
Mm-hmm.
That time is more than nineteen, you know, hours a week. And so it's finding out that balance. Where you can then add that cherry on top, which is the grant writing, to make sure that we are achieving those goals.
But I I'm struggling with connecting the grant writing with goal one and two. We can interchange if we want. Like, so we understand we need to do great wastewater on, or look at wastewater on, like, again, we have a grant. Claire's part of it, right? So that's in motion.
Yes.
Okay, so this person is not gonna take over what Claire's doing for that. She's already in motion.
Right, for that particular grant.
Right.
There are other grants out there could, that could be useful.
But I think, I think we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit, because I think we we need to make sure the people we have don't leave. I think we need to, I think we need to make sure we're still continuing the relations that, relationships that we had. In town, pre-coach.
Yes.
And so that, so if I were. If I were to make a decision tonight, it would be to keep the part-time person. Position and focus that and. With the grants, I I I just, I think there's too much overlap with other areas and I think you're trying to, I'm all about combining positions. So I get that. I I am. I'm just, I'm having a, I feel like you're adding the grant writer. Into this position to justify full-time. That's what I feel like.
It it well. To that point, um, with over three hundred thousand dollars worth of grants that. Our part-time position got.
Yeah.
Last time. We know she was doing more than the nineteen and a half. So we have the uh potential to expand that. To bring in more of those grant opportunities to the town.
So that's the grant amount that you got, but what is the revenue stream that was generated from getting those grants?
Whether or not that's um a revenue stream that you can point to to say, hey, listen, we've got a wastewater study. We now know what our capacity is on Route Nine. That's the long-term strategy, which is. Two years, five years down the road. And if we're saying, well, listen, I've got to see uh a return on that investment immediately. That it's, we got a grant, where's the business? Then that's not building a long-term master plan.
I get that, but I think when you're throwing out the three hundred thousand.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's the amount of grants that we've gotten. We're not there yet in terms of seeing the revenue generated from that necessarily.
Uh, one of the grants was from the Small Business Administration, um, that, um. Yeah, okay, yeah, well, you can bring up that one as well.
So one of them was for twenty-four and a half thousand dollars from um for shared shared spaces.
Yeah.
You guys know outdoor tents and portable heaters. Would be great if we could canvass all the local businesses and restaurants and say, how much, how much increased business did you get because of that?
So that's a good one. I agree with you.
I don't, I mean, we, Rob and I can't split up all the local businesses in town.
No, no, I mean, there was, there was. Okay, so, but I agree with you.
To very, um, um. And Mr. Butler, um, wanting EDC to do exactly what Mr. Malowski did, which is truly draw a direct line from. Your efforts to revenue here and I, it's a long-term thing, it's a very, it's hard to do, so. I wouldn't ask you that, but nineteen and a half hours, you haven't built a position yet. I mean, this has been open since July first.
And he.
That's my problem. I don't do this. So I'm going to support the four-year position, you know. And it's a bunch of call, call, as anybody else here, maybe more so, um, but I am just really concerned that the bleeding is my own speed. Virtue is already. A torrent. Um, we've got one big landlord who's um tenant is threatening to to leave. We've got um South West Pizza, personnel, there's a wireless. Uh, we've got one I told you about saying we may leave. We've got EMC is definitely leaving. They're gone, they're already gone. They're all empty, so I don't know what's gonna happen there. Um, seems going on, my building just went thirty-two. I have empty, so um I think the bleeding has started and we need to stand it as soon as we can, so I. I know this is a risk, totally risk, um, but I I'm willing to take the risk to get a, try to get a lead. The person who does understand how to write grants and find grants, right? That's this, my daughter in grad school, you know, took whole class on writing grants. So it is definitely a mark to it as far as we're gonna do it. Um, so I'm willing to take the chance. Maybe one thing we should do is, um. But if we approve tonight this grant, it says grant, right? And we give personnel, the the, you guys work tomorrow, personnel takes it on the night, um. I still believe it's written stone, um, that we're going to do this, but we at least have started the process so that we can approve this if we, once we get the budget all together. We really still think, um, this is one case we just gotta throw out. Uh, more, we don't want no position, new positions because we just can't afford to, because I don't see how we can afford not to do this. Um, I really worry about the um business community in this town, um.
Okay, to ask a question to to follow on your point there, just my own education. So how would that work? If we were to talk about this tonight? If we were to approve a draft position, so subject to changes, some manipulation, and then bring in the personnel and get some funding approved. What, what can and what can't happen between now and town meeting such that? It makes it a time, like, do you all have the right to to further discuss it? Like, is it still open or?
They could look at and say, I don't care what personnel did, I don't care what site board did, I don't care what EDC did. We can, of course, they could just say, I'm supportive and basically tell Tommy, don't, don't support, that could happen. We also take a vote, we can say, even if we do all this, we can still take a vote and say, we still, we, you know, I'm putting the budget together, it just looks so horrible. We just keep the position, I mean, next year, the position's approved, you know, so we do that too, when we see, we don't. We've got a lot of work to do this, frankly. Um, so it's still, just because we do this, that doesn't mean it's, it's, it's a, I don't deal as far as. Getting it on the war, or town meeting and getting town meeting to prove it and being, giving the budget committee to basically recommend. So there's still, there's still steps to be done, so um, that's why I'm hoping maybe Lisa Chelsea will um be that we still. Aren't done, even if we take the first step tonight. But if we don't take the first step tonight, then personnel is saying that they don't have time, they need, they want us, and we're gonna do it, they wanted us to do it tonight.
If you, you know, as as I said before, we kind of met jumped in um prematurely. I don't think it's as important we approve the job description as it is for personnel board to know. That you're, you're willing to move forward with this position twenty-four. This goes twenty-four.
Let me ask you a question. What are you asking Personnel Board to put through the process? How can they do a draft? I mean, this could drastically change between tonight and, you know, I mean, I'm not supportive of this draft as well. So unless we're, and and.
And and they're gonna need a job description to put through the reading process and. As you said, there are things that may change in this, so.
We can, the EDC hasn't approved. So how will Regan approve something that EDC hasn't taken a position on? I don't know. Not that I think they won't. I'm sure that they will tomorrow, because again, it's it's very well done, but I just. I I'm I'm sorry, I can't tonight based on a draft and to send this to Personnel Board to have them put it out to see where they would. Stoke the job or leave the job when this isn't necessarily where I would see it.
I'm not willing to lose a year on this, so I think I, you know, again, that's, but there will be. Important, and I think that, you know, to Chelsea's point, there is certainly some risk of overlap. In terms of the position, but I think again, if people are sensitive to that, that's to me something that reasonable people can work out here. And they're champions of this, and I think the stakes are pretty high. I think it's important. At and uh move forward as quickly as we can.
I agree, Sam. I just wish we wouldn't have gotten it tonight and have to make a decision on it tonight, but we. How many times have we done job descriptions here or whatever and it's taken more than one move?
Yeah.
That's, I guess that's my concern is I'm feeling.
Modified as a.
I think a little bit of it is also, this is our first time in three years. March or May.
I'll turn. I want to support it. I do. I'm just, I feel, again, I feel pressured to do this tonight with the first time draft. And I don't agree with some of the things that are around it, and I and I think it warrants a little more discussion, but I'm one of five. You know, there's certainly, all it takes is a majority to move this forward, so.
So please, so you think with more time, more fleshing out some of the specific issues you had. Um, you think that would be the better process to to.
I I think just one big picture question.
Yeah.
Is. Is there support for making this a full-time EDC coordinator position, in which case you can take out the grant? Or is there?
Well, that are a whole lot of discussion, but. What I said prior was Andrew, if what they're looking for is not this, then they should be asking for what they're looking for. Not using this as they want a full-time person, but this is the only way they can get it. I I would much rather have an honest discussion on what it is we really need. You know, whether I support that or not, at least it's it's a better discussion. How we can best support EDC, not just making it full-time and letting this person do five hours or ten hours of grant writing. You know, I I just, I wanna be specific on what they need and what we're providing and what the taxpayers are paying for. And I'm just, I just have a question, so, and that's okay. Again, I'm one of five. I'm one of five.
One of the things that's interesting to note, Lisa, one of my observations, we had version one of the job description that Rob and I worked on. We co-edited it, and we submitted it, got some feedback from town, and we noticed that the ti- title had changed from what we initially proposed, right? Which was, um. Community, Community and Economic Development Coordinator to Community Development Coordinator. It was interesting to note that the word economic was struck, and first I was like, hmm, that's interesting. Then the more you read the proposed edits that we're submitting, it's a larger community-based role, it's taking on different things. Yeah, there's gonna be overlap, there's overlap in every professional job I've ever worked in, yeah, every municipality I've worked in, right? What you don't want is two people doing the exact same job, because that's just a waste of money. But if there's overlap and there's coordination and making sure things that move forward, that's a good thing. I I've rarely seen that be a bad thing. So when you see that we're involving other departments, other boards, other committees. And ideally, working with those other departments, boards and committees to get more money. Then it does represent a broader role that can support larger things, and I do think in this particular case, that's striking when we're in an economic title. When looking at it broader as community, does make sense. So yeah, this is, we're asking for a full-time role. That's going to do a lot of what the EDC part-time role did. And it's going to seek some grant administration for the broader community that is South Row.
So how would you then prioritize? Say, there's a couple of grants, and so-and-so might have an idea or so-and-so, but there's EDC.
Well, let's remember.
Prioritize.
The role reports to the town ministry, not to us.
I think that's one thing this doesn't communicate out there. And.
Didn't say it in the first paragraph?
It's town administrator, and, yeah, and EDC. It doesn't say town administrator. Um, so when, when I'm a member and want, that plays into the overlap. So I'm on Shoxie, and I see that you're gonna start doing what I'm doing, but it's EDC that's coordinating this person. You know, um, again, the, you know, it talks about press releases, and I'll go back to that again, because it talks about boards, departments and committees as appropriate. Um, I, again, if this person is gonna report to Mr. Purple, that's one thing. You know, and Mr. Purple can monitor, potentially monitor time. Again, I just, I worry about the amount of time that's actually gonna be spent in there.
So Monica's role reported to you fully, correct, Mark? And not partially to EDC fully?
So EDC, so it, it, we're to the town administrator, but EDC pretty much had a lot of the, you know, I don't wanna say control, but input into the day-to-day. Um, I think that, um, and, and I, I appreciate you putting me on the hook, and I'll, I'll, I'll stay, I'll be on the hook for, for changing the title, simply because, um.
It wasn't meant, meant to be negative.
It was fine. No, I, I didn't make it higher.
Oh, you sit on the hook, you made it, so, typically, that's, that's for Jordan, that's all.
So, um, I, I think that, um, I, I think that the position, my understanding is that we should be developing this position more than just economic development. That's why I thought, you know, kind, you know, the community development piece, obviously the director piece was, um, but, but the community development, because, and I, and I think we're all kind of articulated, you know, how a lot of this would, would fit together, um, you know, on, on those pieces. But, but again, the things that you're pointing out, Miss Bonch, is, you know, our, our process pieces that don't line up in here, that need to be, that, that just need to be, you know, this needs to be, this needs to be lined up better.
And you know, on other positions, shared positions, full-time positions, there's specific hours that are allocated to that. You know, uh, conservation ZBA, they have a specific hours. Granted, that can change and fluctuate as needed. That's fine, but you know, Katie, you know, spends X amount of time she's allocated. There's no allocation here that we're really talking about. I keep hearing nineteen and a half, but nineteen and a half isn't enough. So what is the real allocation we're looking at for these hours?
I mean, they, you know, and, and Katie Perry is a good, is a good example, but I don't sit there with Brian Valentine and say, you're up, you've had your twenty.
That's not what I'm saying.
Yes, no, because, because a real, but, but for the positions to work successfully, there's a flow. And it's going to be, there are times when, you know, when it's tax time or when there's something going, you know, um, you know, you take care of that when it's licensing time, or there's things that we need back on this side, you know, um, there's that, there's that even flow and um, um, but I'm, I'm more interested in Mr. Malowski's point is, you know, let's talk about the position. If it, if we really do need a full-time EDC position, let's talk about a full-time EDC position and not accentuate with grants and everything, which I know Mr. Stein has been looking for forever, but, but say that we can, we can make the position full-time by adding the grant piece. But really, it's the E, it's the economic development stuff that we.
Well, I, I, uh, to, to the larger point, we need a full-time position. I, 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 I believe that within my heart, um, it's, there's the administrative function of it, there's the business outreach, there is the infrastructure element that comes along with it. There is all of that. I also know that the state of Massachusetts also implemented the Community One Stop for Growth, which is where they put thirteen grant programs under um DHCD. You're allowed to apply once a year, and that covers more than just economic development. So if we could do a full-time economic development person and say, hey, listen, you don't have to do any grants, fabulous. That would be enhancing the uh business recruitment and business retention goals that we need. However, if there is someone who is hesitant to take a position on adding any full-time role, we have to be somewhat creative and flexible, which is where the idea of a joint position, doing both economic development and grant, allows for that flexibility. We, if it's hard enough to convince someone that we need a full-time role anyway, but we also need grants, wouldn't it be great to have that level of flexibility to do both? And to take those steps, particularly given the fact that the biggest and best grant out there for the state of Massachusetts is the Mass Works brand, which is built upon public infrastructure and economic development. That economic development can also in, include housing. If we want to ever go after that very large grant, we are going to need that collaboration between housing, economic development, and the state and a grant um submission. And so that's where that flexibility of that full-time role comes in. And if we're looking for ways in which to justify and pay for, just want that flexibility. That's why we started with this draft job description.
Just try to add to that. Um, I just did a quick search, because I wanted to make sure. I don't think we necessarily specifically called out half. I don't think we specifically called out fifty percent, fifty percent. It could be through discussion here, and we could say it's seventy-five.
Said it in this meeting, though.
Right, but, but, so I'm trying.
That's what I'm saying. If it's not that, tell me what it is.
I'm trying to have an open discussion here to come, to come up with a way where we could still get more than the nineteen and a half hours we're getting, for the clue that wasn't enough for the part-time role, but still satisfy some of the other departments, committees and towns that could benefit from assistance with grant writing. So if we think that there's no way that we could ever possibly use twenty-point-zero hours of work from a grant writer per week, it doesn't, by the way, it doesn't have to be per week, it could be a month on average, or however we want to slice it up, then we can make it through, through this discussion, make that change to something that's more amenable. Maybe it's twenty-five, seventy-five, twenty, eighty, I don't know. I'm just saying, it doesn't necessarily have to be fifty-fifty if we think that you can't satisfy fifty percent of this person's time requirement.
Sit in, we're kind of pointing the hours twenty, but I am convinced that you need a full-time person. So I'm there on that. Um, um, whether, you know, they do the grants last department versus doing the big things like you're talking about, there, you are responsible for those every single year. Um, we can talk about that, but I am convinced, based on what I said about what I'm supporting, that we do need to quickly up this position to want that really has got the time to spend um working on keeping the businesses in town and bringing new businesses in and doing all the things like I love, I did the people. These, I wish we did um tip projects. Um, I went to a meeting not too long ago with Amy Fab and Westboro Professor, sent him bragging about, we take Olympus from us, and then of course we sent him going, yeah, you did. Um, I got one client there. Every place they go is, they, they got a tip. Um, so, um, I, I still there are some, what we do with this, what the actual rating's been, I'm still convinced that we need a chance to have forty hours to see what we do.
I have confidence Mr. Purple can sort out that overlap, the coordination, the, how you allocate the time. I'm, I'm less compelled to have specific time targets even as opposed to letting Mr. Purple sort out who needs what kind of time for what projects, and that's gonna vary over time. And I, I guess I'm concerned about being too rigid about that, frankly. But I share a campaign that you've been sitting on this for years, and the pressure is extreme enough about, I think we gotta do something.
Yeah, the, the things that I'm trying to balance are trying to sharpen the job description as much as possible, address some of these concerns, but also not leading.
Can I, can I just ask a question? Um, I'm still not there, but it would be helpful if you have towns that have something similar to this and kind of have what they've been able to do um long-term in terms of grants and then execution.
Give me a combined position like this here.
Well, also, you know, this is another discussion that was first time in September is, you know, you. This may help me answer the question about the communities that don't just necessarily, not a strictly economic development coordinator, the community, and that, what is the community part? What specific function of September?
The people in our peer exchange.
Yes.
What are their challenges? Because Rodney was the better, but yeah, I think it's my point.
Yeah. No, 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 uh, well, um, I, I believe it's economic development coordinator, because, um.
Also, you personally have some experience. Yes, that'll be right.
Yeah, yeah, your, your time, your time is never your own. Um, there is always too much to do. Um, you're always spread too thin. Um, and true, it was a larger community, but um there's, there's never enough time in the day. Um, which is why I firmly believe a, a full-time position is warranted. What I wanna do is provide the best value for the town. And if they're only doing economic development work, there is leaving money on the table on those other grants. And I wanna make sure that should this be a full-time position, we get the full value that we can from that person. Because they're, um, they're the people who are going to have the, the time to see Yamafuji and find out what they can do to help market them and make sure that people go there and the South Borough House of Pizza and figure out, you know, those things to fill those office buildings on the turnpike, which are difficult to get in and out of, and there might be the ways to take those.
So just to clarify, the sidebar question I asked Rob to enlighten you all is, one of the things we started up a few months back, I think it was at the end of the summer. Well, we started it back in spring, but then, um, one of the people I'm about to mention, when I leave, um, was a peer exchange. So I think we reached out to North Borough, Marlborough, Ashland, obviously South Borough, and I'm forgetting one. And I essentially said, hey, you know, I'm Alan Donniac, I'm South Borough's EDC. I got the name from, from Royka, and I said, I'd like to start up a peer exchange. It's me, I don't know, maybe once every two months, once a quarter, let's talk about what have you done, what's been successful, what are you having challenges on, and we can just kind of like compare notes. Uh, we had a first, really good first meeting, our second one is next week, I believe, and we're actually expanding it to two more towns. Um, but what was really interesting was I think all the towns and I can't remember who, I forgot. They all have full-time roles. And it was just like, Rob and I were a little bit green with Envy over here, because they're talking about things they've done, but we don't have that role. And so I bring it up not to say C, 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 but just to show you that towns that, yes, some were bigger, some were, were like-sized, have this role, they've dedicated it, and it's a mix of economic as well as community development focused, to do all kinds of broad things. So it's nice to see that other, in other towns are taking that step to make it a full-time role. Um, so just.
If you can send me some information on that, everything.
Absolutely. Yeah, sure.
So it seems to me like where we are right now, um, is we can, wait, um, Lisa and Chelsea gave for that to be reinforced. We could vote on this draft, job description, um, and written, um, or we could not vote on this draft expression, but basically take a role that we do support adding the full-time um community development coordinator for this year twenty-four. So at least we can let Personnel Board know that. Um, but know that we won't give this to them for their.
And to that point, if, if the purpose of Personnel Board, meaning the job description, so they've been rated, and think about where is the salary ban, that how much of a difference does it really make about getting the exact ratio of EDC economic development coordinator versus, I don't know that it makes that much of a difference in that, where you can find other, like, I mean, you based, can you speak to the, how you came up with, you did some research on it?
Yeah, yeah. Um, uh, our, our neighbors to the southwest, southeast, um, Ashley. Um, I, I, I took a chance to look up, um, my colleague Beth Reynolds' title, Director of Economic Development and Community Outreach. It's, it's basically, she is working with the business community and the community in general to enhance things. Um, she's done uh little pop-ups. Um, uh, when you come in past the train station before you turn in. That's something that she worked on. That was an empty town lot, it's right beside Town Hall, and it's um art space, and people hang out there. And that is something that's not economic development related, but it is an initiative that could happen. So there are lots of communities out there that have economic development and community development, uh, in practice.
So, Andy, let me just say, yes, the, the, how to split does, does not really matter for personnel. But when I look at this, and this goes to personnel, I see coordinate, collect, coordinate, arrange, compose, fulfill, coordinate and maintain. Those are the key words that give you what someone's responsibility is. And if I'm just worried that without having something concrete that we agree on, for the EDC has been voted on. Um, and again, I get it's draft, and, and we can send it, but I don't know how it's gonna get graded correctly unless we can agree what the role of this person is gonna be. That's, that's my, my, my concern for tonight. I mean, again, it all comes down to process, you know, um. If we talked about it prior and, and had other discussions on, you know, what we thought, what EDC thought, you know, as a collective group, I guess that's on us. We didn't do that. We didn't have them come in and tell us exactly what they were looking for. We just suddenly had a job description come in that we have to approve tonight. And then that's, that's my concern. I mean, I wanna make sure it's graded correctly. And that somebody's, you're not putting responsibilities, you're getting points in the rating system, and responsibilities are not gonna be. And I think there's other groups, you know, um, did anyone reach out to Shox? And have a discussion with Shox, you know, this person was gonna coordinate and help them in any way. Did that discussion take place?
So what we've done in our last meeting was take boards, committees and departments throughout the town, and we actually split them up among EDC members.
Yeah.
Um, I think Rob had four, I think I had five, whoever the count was, but something like that. And that's actually on our agenda tomorrow, we'll also check in. Have you done this? What was the response? Are you setting meetings? Did you not need a meeting? Did they say, okay, are they gonna write a letter? So that, that step has been taken. I just don't have a result for that step because we haven't made.
Right. And so for me, it would be easier to say, oh, yeah, we talked to Shoxie, and, and Shoxie thinks this is great, and they look forward to having the help. Great, but I don't know. Shoxie has a part-time person, five hours a week. Um, again, so it's just, it's process and time, and I'll just leave it.
But Shoxie and anybody else could say, we've got it covered, we've got the help, but I think that's a person. Do we not have time to proceed on both tracks here? If we approve this tonight for Personnel Board to consider, and Mark and others work to refine it, and we can, and you can talk about it as a personnel, and so that they're not gonna rate it next week. But if they know they're gonna need to write it, don't even have time to actually refine it, where it actually gets into the rating process.
They're January ninth date, what is this? I think from conversations with the chair, I mean, they, they've got a lot, they've gotta do, I think, study. And they've gotta get this ready for that meeting, and gotta talk a little about all the process thing. They've gotta get their process all set as to how this is gonna work, because there's changes, there's A P, there's financial components of certain things. There's a lot they have to do, and to do this as well, which is going to impact that work, you know, um, they'd like to have sooner or later. Again, maybe the chair, you know, maybe the chair can say, look, we, we need to have it by X date, but you know, um, it, it's, it's, it's gonna be a rush job at this.
It only takes three or four minutes for, so, you know, um, Sam, you sat in a seat where you strongly disagreed with the board before and, and how the board did things. So I know you appreciate where, you know, kind of where I'm at. So again, the board can certainly move forward, Kathy, as the board sees that I'm one member, um, and you know, if it does go forward, obviously I won't be silent and trying to get a job description that I think works better. But I just, tonight, I, I just can't. Chelsea, where are you at?
I'm having a hard time with the job description, and I'm still not clear on what this person's gonna do. But outside of that, I'm having a hard, even if I did agree with the job description, I'm not there on the funding side either. So for me to move it forward to Personnel and then vote no on a budget, I think contradict, I'm contradicting myself. So I guess I'm a known wolf stuff. So I think we've got a three, two votes. Yeah, it's been a healthy discussion, so, um, it's gonna always be modified for, but I think if you don't get it rolling, um, you won't be done.
Most of the other year.
Most of the other year.
So I can reach to anything that should be changed in this. I'm not aware of anything here. And we do think that we've got to get full-time person to really focus, trying to convince the business environment.
You all have a meeting tomorrow night, a different meeting tomorrow night, is that right?
Yes.
So as you heard, we have EDC meeting tomorrow night. What I can promise to you is that I can share with you the results of that meeting rather than waiting for minutes, and a minute's our official. But because this is timely, we can easily send a email to select board on Thursday morning to say unofficially. This was what we covered, and you guys can always look at the YouTube video to watch, but if you are interested in knowing what the summary of our outreach was, I know that's one of the key, the key inputs here. Very happy to share that to give you that piece of information Thursday rather than waiting for officials.
Thank you.
And, and I, one, one point, um, because I, I heard you say it. Um, it's an in-person, we're not doing, uh, the hybrid, so it'll be in-person, so there won't be a YouTube.
Okay.
Just.
Forgot about that, yeah.
Uh, it will be, yeah.
Okay. Uh, well, I will share them with you. You can always chew them up with the vision, and it's going to come out, but. Um, in between that, then and now, you'll have to take me at my word, but. But yeah, I'll share that with you so you have the information sooner rather than later. So, and I know I also have a follow-up with it as well, and we'll reach out to, um. I guess what is the next step in terms of making a revision to the job description? What's the most efficient way? To work through that? Would there be a collective draft? From the select board? Would there be us be working with you, Mr. Purple, to what? We're, we're mental to making something work. I just want to know, what is that path?
Well, I, I think, I think the board, um. Since I opened my mouth first, uh, so I think, I think since the board is the appointing authority.
Mm-hmm.
There really needs to be that buy-in from the board as to what they're looking for. I think it would be best probably to have. You know, a member or two assigned to the board to work with maybe, you know, a member or two of your committee. To come up with something to bring back to your respective, you know, to bring back. Respect committees, um, but, but, and not to diminish EDC, but I really think select board is the one, as the appointing authority, that needs to approve it. Um, and, and that's probably the most expeditious app. Um, given, given what we are.
We do have one member who was particularly concerned about the job descriptions, a good candidate.
And, and I'm not participating in the next two meetings, so there you go. I would be happy to work with these.
Do you have a chance to sit down with EDC and really spread this to the point of immediate base, um, um, better sense of those right now, in things that. Um, clarify, they, you know, clarify that clearly this person don't, um, report to Mr. Purple, period. Um, I just can't believe that if we were to take this on seventeen, that's not enough time for personnel to.
I mean, EDC tomorrow night wants to say a person or two. I'm, I'm available this week to, to, to sit down, you know, um, I, I don't. I'm still in there tonight.
The reason I bring up the January ninth is that was the email I got from, from Barry on personnel. I have another work with. I just don't know how much we would.
Yeah, I think, I think personal, personal board has taken a big bite. Um, off of, you know, doing some things, and this pain class study that, that, that happens every, every so often. Um, they're looking to do a number of things that require a certain level of coordination, never mind just for town meeting coordination with the members. Just to get everybody on the same page as to how we're going to move forward and which folks stepping off with left or right. Um, and, and, and I think he's drawn a somewhat of a curry line in the sand saying, if you've got anything new, I need it by this date, if we have a chance to incorporate it into what we.
Could, could we vote, uh, contention, brutal contention on Lisa?
Yeah, don't do that.
Well, she was not, see, um, and explain, um, what we're doing, what time, I mean. It's going to have to be, we just can't give it to them. Um, but then we'll be back on seventeen, right? Should give me time.
Yeah, absolutely. And then Chelsea can get information that she needs as well, um. And then, then. Let's see what we.
Yeah, there was a discussion about having personnel board, and to talk about some of these things and everything we're doing.
I, I got a very online this. We even.
Yeah, no, but if personnel board was to come. Then you might be able to wrap up.
But I wouldn't want them to come to really understand everything they're doing. I mean, it's really important to understand.
There's other big things that are going on.
Do you want two members of the board?
I was going to say two, two, two here or two there?
Two, either way.
Okay, so.
I mean.
Who?
I mean, I would say one of Sam or Andrew would want to be too. I'm sure.
Yeah.
More than likely, it'd probably be Alan and I. Um, uh, and obviously we'd, uh, take a vote, or we'd have that discussion amongst our, um, committee. To see if anyone else would want to participate.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if you've got a chance to read it, kind of just to keep it through.
It's, it's, yeah, yes. And, and I, I think from, uh, the EDC's perspective. We want to be as collaborative and include as much or as little as people want. We understand the need for a full-time position. We want to make sure that it aligns with everyone else's goals and initiatives. So if that's adding more, taking some away, clarifying, we want to do that because we see the need. And I, I think we can make that commitment.
Andrew and I will send out an email and coordinate with you guys after the meeting's done.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yeah.
So we want to have a. Andrew, Sam?
Quiet week.
My whole week was done in the day today, so you can come spend some time with me, that'd be fine.
Was it a day?
It, it was a day. Um, a couple of quick things. One, um, I just want to bring to the board, um, just came this afternoon. Um, um, from Tompan, which is our medical marijuana facility in town. Um, they've notified us that they intend to relocate their dispensary from South Borough, so. So, um, we will be using our sole, um, um, medical marijuana dispensary.
When, when?
So it's, I, I did reach out to the, um, to the, um, to Ms. Rosenfeld, um, in Tompan. That's all dependent on the cannabis condition, how quickly they move. It could be three months, it could be six months, it could be more.
Not enough consumers here.
Uh, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that the climate has changed a little bit once recreational got approved.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, they may have other opportunities to expand, um, um, you know, into that recreational piece. Um, beyond the medical, um, great location in terms of Route ninety-four, ninety-five, bike and everything, I think that'll work. But, um, again, that's, so that's going to lead, um, for revenue, you know. In our local receipts and, you know, um, finance team, um, you know, uh, we'll be, we'll be taking a look at that. Um, as to how we look to, never mind to build upon local receipts, but how do we look to close that?
Well, it's another business going by, by.
Yeah, is, and the zoning restriction, I don't remember how the town meeting voted, but within X miles of the school would be there. For a place that does this claim from that same location, because I'm not remembering how that.
A marijuana business.
Yeah, marijuana.
Medical.
Just constraints or something.
I think, I think that, that, that the permit for that business is approved that location, and then there was a.
Grass.
Yeah.
That made it an industrial zone areas.
I have, I have, I'd have to go and take a look at that. I mean, it, it's a very, our business district on Route nine is very thin to begin with. So, um, I think that the bylaw is pretty restrictive as to where it can go. And if you take a look at, you know, Route nine is, is very few places that you can come over here. So.
I think the bylaw like almost listed out sites, so you know, it was almost site-specific one. It was really, if I remember.
Yeah, it was interesting. Uh, one other piece, um, I want to bring up. Um, and for the board some information, um, regarding, um, road bearing external police vests. Uh, this was something that came up during the collective bargaining session with the police union. Um, the police had expressed some concerns, um, with, with some of their members, um, you know, in terms of back issues, which I have since learned, you know, are more prevalent, you know, across the profession, uh, because of all the equipment that they wear on the belts. Um, also, um, because of all the equipment they wear on their belts, it, it goes, um, around to the back. And, um, I'm that example of some of the thinner officers, um, that equipment can sit in the small of your back. So when you're in the cruiser, you know, it tears up the seat. You know, it's not good for your back, so and so forth. So, um, and we actually do at this point have one, um. Um, one officer with a medical issue, the documented medical issue, back issue, um, and so obviously we need to provide accommodation. However, during negotiations, um. Quite frankly, we didn't have enough time to learn about this enough, um, in order for, um, me to feel comfortable bringing something forward to the board and saying. Yeah, we got to do this. So, um, I do want to give credit to Sergeant DeLuca and Detective Niver, who met with Chief Noel. Um, Vanessa Hale and myself to talk about these issues and to explain to us the issues. Um, I think that, you know, it's to the town's benefit, um, to address this issue in the way that we feel best works. Um, for the town, um, and, and not simply to just address it, you know, whether it's a medical issue, okay, we'll handle this and, and do it in this way. It's, it's better to, um, retain some level of, of control over the chief's policies. Um, so, uh, the chief and, and the union, um, have, um, come to some agreement on this. Um, this is a no-cost item to the town, um, in any, um, officers, it's an option. Any officers that want to use the external, um, um, you know, load their vest would have to buy that out of their clothing allowance. Um, that is part of like a bargaining agreement. Um, the, the vest, and I think in, in, in some of the information that was sent to you, um, the vest, when I first came, uh, came upon this issue, all I could think of is the officers that you would see like in Times Square, you know, um, you know, with the heavy vests and everything in that. And, and that didn't really screen communities. And, um, and then in looking at, um, the vest, that again, a lot of our communities around us already have those options and everything. They're not that bulky. They still provide that level of protection, but they take a lot of that equipment and take it off of the belt. And, um, uh, there was also, um, you know, one story, um, that was shared with us, but all the officers, you know, in terms of. You know, um, you know, the way that the vest is now under the shirt. And some of the issues, um, that can, that can happen when that needs to be removed quickly, and you can't get to it, you know, this, you know, an external vest can be taken off in a quick, you know, on second call. Um, and, uh, so I won't, I won't go into the details of that, but, um, again, wanted the board to be aware of this. The chief is fully supportive, the union has been very good with this, again, I credit. Um, so I've been taking, I've put a lot of information together and making a very compelling case. So if you, if you have any, you know, questions or concerns, I would just start from the chief level. Um, but, but I think, um, you know, these, these kind of dimensions.
It seems to make good sense on many levels. What, with the argument, you couldn't do this. Hard pressed, but.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I don't think, I don't think there is, there is one, um.
You're probably right.
It looks to a militant, like a SWAT team or something. But again, those are a different style, right? And so some of the pictures that, that I think that you have provided, you know, when you take a look at it, you're like. Oh yeah, no, I see it now, right? But, but it's not, you know, again, we're a small community, you know, community policing is what we do. And, and so making sure that our officers are effective but approachable. You know, and can have those bonds and, and make those, um, connections with the community, I think is important. And I don't think that these vests are detrimental at all in town. Not everyone's going to wear them. Right? It's going to be, I can probably think of three or four right off the top of my head that probably won't do this. But I think that there are some, and especially a lot of younger officers, um, and again, maybe some of the officers that, you know, will want to have that equipment so that it isn't sitting back here. And, and leading to a lot of those, you know, back issues. And again, you don't want to be having someone young in their career having those type of issues and then having to deal with them for the next twenty, thirty years. Yeah, so. Um, that is all I have.
Okay, so considering that, I want to hold six A, the closing warrant until you get down to talk about the same part of the warranty. Um, and I want to hold six B, so I want to talk.
I'm, I'm going to use myself in six. There's my stream. And it's a free of abundance fashion to use myself. Turbo bit going out, so.
So light. We're going to talk about B now.
Well, are you going to talk about this now or?
Okay, um. So just want to remind everyone what streets are on this. And the fact that we've actually got quite a bit of access, maybe we need. Okay, so what is on the list that capital? Karen, we were, Parkerville Road, Ward, Chestnut Hill Road. East May, Winchester, Walker, and Upland. William on Main. Carolyn, Ted, Bookside. Parker Cottage, Hammond. Old Portable, Ferris Street, and Lover's Lane. Okay, so that was approved. Um, the one that was contingent on more money was Davis and Ashley. Okay, so we originally thought that was going to cost about ninety-four fifty-two instead of the, it was only two-on-two. Um, so we turn to the actual spreadsheet that you had in pocket.
Yeah.
If you've seen the first column, the number two-on-two, as far as the streets, the three numbers under it are the F-ots. That are being paid for. Schools are taking care of the two ones that are in trouble here, and we use the golf course, the golf course. Now, this is a part, um, I, I know you guys said for the spreadsheet, you could have got two, but nothing. So I'm happy to work this with you at some other time.
Sorry, can I just stop you?
Yes.
So you listed off all the ones that capital approved, but I don't see lovers on the bid.
Yeah, well, I did. So I didn't look at that. I went over Karen, and she said, yes, those are all, uh, the.
So lovers.
Well, that might explain why it's so, um, so I don't know the answer. So do you know what lovers? So I'm sorry.
I don't see it on there.
But you know, it got added as Campbell wanted to add it.
Yeah.
Um, but it did get added.
How much was it?
Estimated at ninety-seven thousand. And seven, seven wars just called him.
Yeah.
So there's room in there for another hundred for that.
There's more than that, so. All right, I didn't mean to. Okay, so, um, figure that out, why it's not there, right? Because Campbell did. And to what was approved. Um. So there's another couple pots of money that Karen had not put on spreadsheets previously that she did add. One of those is the Winter McCarver Assistant Department, which is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Took them by. So when you put it on, you get a new spreadsheet that she, um, basically finished today. Um, would give us another, uh, six hundred thousand dollars to do more road work. And she said, be careful, um, because you've got to keep some money in the warrant. Um, sorry, I have a question. And then we got one, we still got more than we can do. So I sent this to Campbell today too, so. And then we got one, we still got more than we can do. So I sent this to Campbell today too, so. Sure, so he's got that, you know, I'm gonna talk on the next day or so as far as what he would like to bring forth as far as maybe using some additional money for. Cause Ashley and Davis definitely do that too. It's a problem with Ashley to be solved first, but that would be next in the list.
In this current.
Yeah, yeah, well. It'd have to be another bit, because this, so we're going to try.
Okay.
Well, okay, now are we going, so? Um, so we got two choices. We either table this to the seventeen, find out what happened to lovers. It goes.
Do you have the original bid that went out?
I've asked the question.
Okay.
Yeah, I kind of.
Well, it's clearly not anything. Um, you know, these are the bits that came back, so. I think just to go and approve this to get this going and then get maybe lovers and Ashley Davis added back as a. Get anything else that Capitol and possibly move D P that we had.
Yeah, I don't remember a discussion that others decided lovers and Ashley.
I don't either. So that's, and so in. Karen approved the spreadsheet. Capitol agreed that I can spreadsheet write as far as if they were next in the list. It was completed towards the, but they essentially, so they gets enough money, but it's still gonna have a bunch of this, this is the bit.
How much was Davis?
And that's got a wonderful planning award.
Yeah. So how about, how about we vote to approve this with the intent on adding lovers? Because that should have been left, that should have gone out initially.
Yeah, but these are the bits, so I mean.
We don't know what that is specifically.
So when you get lovers added, this is gonna have to ask for the bids to be.
Can we do an add?
Well, so I'm. I'm hesitant to have this conversation, but. You know, could see about the possibility of doing change order. I have no idea what the value would be that lovers entered.
If we say. If it is. So let's just vote it if there is a way to add lovers voted that way, so that way we don't have to read this. Yeah, okay, yeah.
Uh, one thing, yeah, one thing I just wanna note, Mrs. Sergeant had reached out and said, hey, it'd be really good if pavement management people. Have the information and everything ready and they can kind of give us an idea of. You know, what is this level of work gonna do for our overall pavement management in next summer? Is this good? Is this, you know, what what?
It was missing anything significant.
Right, some kind of guidance. Um, I did, I did have a conversation with Peter and unfortunately, data's not back.
Yeah.
Um, and so, you know, I I think the. This is gonna be some education after the fact. Once this is figured, then you'll have an understanding. Okay, so what does this, what did this work do? You know, where were we before? Where were we after?
And I wasn't suggesting that we hold up. I think we keep moving in this certain.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I expressed to Peter, and he says, you know, the data should be back, you know, shortly. We don't have it yet, but once we do, we can start to try to, you know, you can kind of understand what. How you spend your money and what that did or didn't do.
If it's not good news, don't tell us, Peter.
No, well, I I. Look, I mean, it's it's a, it's an educational, you see the way, so you understand, you understand that, so. I just, for for information purposes, I just wanna point that.
Thanks.
Okay, so here's the motion. Okay, so, okay, so I moved to approve the Rosario Paving contract. With the base bid of a million two oh two three eighty plus the three add-ons that total roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and when we designed that, we tried to add along the lover's name to the base bid with Rosario Paving. We tried it at the same. To not exceed the total of the base bid of one point three. That should not exceed base bid of one point three, getting we believe that lover's name is thousand thousand.
Well, that's what we originally.
So you're reporting a bid. You're reporting a contract at the amount of one million four hundred and fifty-three thousand and sixty dollars.
Yeah, but the base bid that we approved was one three, right?
The base that you were looking at, the estimate is was about one three.
That's how much road ma- road funding we have available for this bid for the base.
Correct.
Because the other alds are funded through other revolting.
That's not their issue. That's our issue. So you're rewarding the bid of one, four, five, three.
Yeah.
Right?
Some of all that, yeah.
We can have a side, have a separate conversation of, okay. Let's talk about what is it gonna cost us if we added to add this street and then what's the change order look like? And then with the understanding that we would really not want to add more than, say, ninety-eight thousand dollars.
I don't think we should do that. That's capital.
I would go with what we. In terms of process, I think if you add anything on lover's public back.
Yeah.
And 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 do the.
Just to be clear, capital proved Ashley Davis as the next. I can tell they did. They agreed, they just have money to do Davis and Ashley. Are you saying no?
I'm not sure about that, Karen.
Spreadsheet to Jason, he said, I agree.
I I I thought that we talked about it, but I didn't know that we voted, so obviously we did.
We we didn't.
They did, correct. I didn't think.
So I said, spreadsheet to Jason, I said, the bid is, this is very rough. I said, a bid is favorable and more can be done. And so Dave and Ashley are next on K G list, and you agree.
Okay. Okay. I know we talked about it, Kathy, I just wasn't.
But let me say this, there's an issue with Davis that's setting it over, so we leave it over. Yeah, so we got it to that and then, okay.
Yep.
All right, um, so I'm just gonna do the motion. Okay, so the motion is to approve a total bid. From Rosario Paving of a million five-three-zero-six-zero-four. One million four fifty-three zero six zero, I think, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, um, to be awarded. And on the request that if we can do an amendment to that bid to add on the cost of doing Lover's Lane, that will be done.
And whether or not to.
I don't think you need to. You've got a million eight, so I wouldn't look that way. So because what hits ninety-nine?
We'd have to agree to that came out of the huge number.
So what we have in. When Capital wrote the email to us on eight twenty-four, they said, we acknowledge that the proposed bid package is potentially higher than the amount of funding available, one point three.
Okay, now sign that one three's no one eight.
Okay, okay.
Okay, all right. Or zero. Okay, um. This spreadsheet is really helpful. It shows us, see, as X is going to be paid more, and she actually thinks that comes to be the way. Um, she said, when it comes to come to that.
These are bigger numbers than I expected.
Six six.
About twelve available funds.
Well, because she had some other things that.
Yeah.
I thought that she had a. So now I'm going to again skip six A, closing warrant, I'm gonna go down to seven A, which is the funding guidance to save on Street Park. Okay, um, so stay with me and make sure everybody understands what I'm proposing. This is really important. It's probably key to getting this passed in. Or getting to that and. So, um. First, one of the first things I wanted to get clear here, the square, the E H Perkins contract stays there. Right, so just refresh your memory. Uh, we started off with a base bid of two nine four ninety-six and change. And follow up two thousand twenty, and that included Ancient Main Street, which we've done now. Put it in Deerfoot Flag, which we're not doing. It did include some work on Corneille, which I didn't know until today, for that part I didn't know, and then. Okay, so the infrastructure and the surface part, right, your plants. So that was in that bid. And now, um. Since then, there's been a change order for orders executed that has changed that two four nine six and change. To two five nine six and change, so about a hundred thousand dollars net. But it's a series of things that caused it, so let me just go, we saw here, so everybody truly understands this. There was a change order relating to the Newton Street Water Project. That's coming out of the water plants, but it still was part of the Perkins contract, so it did change. That added eighty-one thousand dollars to it. Then she had the Deerfoot and Flag project removed, as we all know, and that was a negative a hundred fifteen thousand. And I rounded these slightly, okay. Um, then she added the Corneille Road North project, which is going to pick up where she had already gone to with this project. And take it over to the causeway down by the safety building and do this. First what she basically said to me, that was more though than taking off what I can do with that is three hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. Then, this is the important part. She did have removed this contract, all of the Saint Mark's Park surface work. For that, I mean, true parks of the impavers, benches, plants, etc. So true perks of, she did remove that from the page Perkins contract. And all those numbers I just gave you, net out to about a hundred thousand dollars in addition to the original contract. Can lose your value.
No, no, I'm following, I don't, just.
Okay, so that's what we're today, so just a contract two-five-nine-six with the actual purpose of the park removed. But with the infrastructure of the work there remaining, which is basically move the roof, right? And all the stuff that entails, all the drainage, etc.
Yeah.
So that's still in there, okay? Well, that's been done, but it's still wanting to be done, but that's still, okay? All right.
Can I stop my some function?
Yes.
So Newton Street. Or is it a separate article?
Yes.
So there's a separate funding source, but it was the same contractor?
Yes, that's why it's here, so.
Okay.
Okay, now note that, okay, let's go back to the number that was the park service fee. That was two hundred forty thousand, which is not too far from the two ninety we got from the park, right? There there is a connection. Okay, so I believe that the two things we need to take to town meeting based on our discussion of the twentieth. Are obviously the M O U to swap the land, right? This could be a separate article. And the actual cost and design of the proposed park truly. Design, sketch out, cross it out, as we say, this is what we want to do, um, on this point on. And this is what it's going to cost, because this is now that kind of. It's got funded so ways.
And how we were gonna pay for it is also out of, out of.
I'm gonna make a proposal for that, so I run this by Brian down today, so I gotta figure out how to pay for it too. Because if we just do an article for, you know, two hundred ninety thousand dollars, it wouldn't be effective till July first. And now you're in the wrong season to, you know, plan whatever, really wanna do it in the spring, right? We're gonna get this done, we want the, as soon as we get done, Tommy, we might be able to start working on park, right? So, um, I talked to Brian and he agrees that we could, um. Basically funded by not the tax, I mean, which July first, we funded using. Free cash, if anyone wanted to do it, got excess free cash right now, and we got, if you remember what Brian has put into RevCap. He's put in about a million three, three, four, so there's another five hundred thousand dollars in free cash that he's proposing to start a stabilization fund or something else. So we could take two ninety, two fifty for that and basically propose that that article. It has Tommy but funded with free cash. Um, if we don't, it's outside town meetings, that's why I didn't think Harper's really like it, because if you really want to tell me. And I've been told this by several people who have said they're going to support this, and they didn't before. If we make it clear what the park is gonna cost, right? And take it to town meeting, um, so they really are able to wait on it and see what's gonna move. And I'm gonna get to the money you needed, second, as far as the design goes, so let's talk, so that's the first part. Can I answer you?
No, I know, I I just, so I'm just thinking out loud about this, so. The infrastructure. Piece has been paid for.
Most of, not all of it.
Because. But some of it, which. So if. If that doesn't pass into. Then we we need to figure out. What happened with the grant, right? Like, we would have to pay the grand battle.
Because we only did spend.
I know we did. But it, but it didn't result.
Well, you're right, so we got to have a part, you're right.
We have to.
Part, so we can call apart, fun apart. On stone wall.
Right.
So yes, we have, we still have, you know, we heard that we're not gonna write the.
But it, and I think the, but the other side of it is. If we, so forget about the eighty thousand for the additional work for Newton Street, because that's a different funding source, right? So you take that out, your deer foot and flag was truly, we didn't do the work. We took it out of the bin, the Saint Mark's Street Park surface work. Is where it gets a little interesting, because we did do. Infrastructure to do the work on top, but we essentially gave the two forty back. So so if you take the entire Saint Mark's Park project, and I don't know, whatever, it's five hundred thousand. Let's just say for a number, right? We we didn't pay for half. Because we took it out of this bid, so. I'm just. I I understand what you're saying, but then we should have. Excess road money available. Because we returned, because we took more out of the bid. Then. Because we took more out of it.
Well, but we also put Corneille Road back in for some more, so that's.
Understood, understood, but there was a, there's a benefit to putting Corneille in there, right? Because I. Um, so I just, I just wanna be clear that. We didn't spend all the money initially in the bid. That we thought we were gonna spend. Right, so we added Corneille in, we took some out, so. I I I agree that town meeting should have, I get, I get where you're going. I just don't want them to think that we're asking for an additional two hundred and fifty that we spent on top of this. Because we did it. I just wanna make sure.
That's where I was going, yeah. Make it clear that.
Yeah, yeah.
Separated it out.
Yeah.
So you see the cost of the, well, on the surface, the cosmetic part of the park.
Yeah.
So just so you know, out of two point five, we have filled and paid a million five. There's a million dollars left to. Done between the three remaining components. There's a little bit on Main Street, two little things to be done, a crosswalk brick, and she's got a similar side, they got a similar side one, a little bit. Portables and maybe seven into the rest of the infrastructure of the park. So that's what's still in that million dollars left to be paid Perkins when they come back in the spring.
So how much of the million that's left is related to the park?
That, I tried to get that sheet, I'm gonna still try to get it, she's only here. So I'm gonna try to get, she tried, she just couldn't do that piece in. So I did try to get her to make that thing, buy it, came to the three parts.
Yeah.
Main Street's time, so it's really between portable and the park as far as how it would be a million dollars. So I did try to get it, she said she couldn't do it. With the time I gave them.
Yeah.
I only asked them to do that.
I mean. Okay. Okay, I think.
All right, so that's piece one. Piece two is, we need to give the working group the tools, be able to do, to bring forth. A truly fleshed out design, ready to go post town meeting. To do that, they need some money. Um, and I don't know what it is, um, that they, that the V H P would need to actually literally give you a designer, not just a sketch, but a design. Truly is one that landscape company can take and implement.
We haven't talked about this other working group, but other than the. You know, discussion about the. Money in the summer.
Yeah. So how about this? Um, if you remember the Art spreadsheet, at the very bottom, you've got thirty-five thousand dollars of unallocated funds, it's not in the tax. I'm relieved, but it's thirty-five now, because the, um. Um, Trail Grant was fifty, they got fifty, and then they needed a use of fifty, so we've got thirty-five that's totally ours to decide what to do. It's not part of the Art Committee recommendation. So we could tonight, I basically vote up to thirty-five thousand dollars to give to the working group. To basically hire V H P to come up with the final design of the park based on the feedback that you guys have got so far, looking at the public forum and everything else you have. Because if you're gonna have.
Oh, no, but I would say that if you're gonna do your final design, but you wanna create bid documents. So that, you know, you're ready to go up bid, so you can understand what this, you know, you can have pricing, so.
Yep.
Because I don't know that your committee is. There you are.
So how is this different than? The other designs? The other designs? Those were just sketches, is that?
Yes.
Okay, so thirty five sounds like a lot if we're looking.
That's why, I don't know what the right number is, so I'm saying up to.
I mean, if we're looking at spending, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't, I would want to do a minimalist. Based on our last conversation.
I think that's where we are.
The numbers that you're loading. Two hundred and fifty or thirty five, sounds like. This work could be done under that, sounds like the, some of the concepts that we're talking about, I mean, that's saying that kind of. Off the top a little bit. If 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 you're doing, if, say it's VHB that continues to do it, which probably makes sense, because one of those designs would be further into a climate sided. And and bid documents, um. I think they would also would give you an estimate as to the value of what they feel that. You know, it's going to cost, well, a- another just practical. Couple of months ago, that step of, okay, the 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 Karen would help with. Pairing, the adopting process of actually taking kind of an idea into instead of. Twenty five percent done plans are something that could more of a fit, and we're going to have a huge transition, which is going to happen in the next. Couple of weeks, so how can we get that done?
I think your two week transition is often.
Questions don't stand. Where, I don't feel like we can rely on. Technical assistance of DPW to get something done really quickly.
The DPW was simply the conduit. You know, I could be the.
Okay.
Um, I don't have, to be HB, I don't have a problem. I've been the conduit with that one in terms of, you know, other issues.
They're an interim person, they're a potential resource to. And and is your view about the timing of this that? You should do this in the timeline of your headline, because it's important. To submit a plan showing part in order to not have to return the two hundred. I'm in favor of some up to thirty five K that some.
I think thirty five K is one. Thirty five.
Yeah, 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 okay, I just wanted to make sure you did.
I don't think it's going to cost thirty five way, it was. But I'm talking about all the way through the bid documents, so we know.
One thing I thought of that probably. Can fit in what we've discussed, that other people think about was, the the part of the interim report that recommended. You know, putting in more sidewalk that is along kind of. It would be the south side of the reconstructed Saint Mark's Park. And that was not in the original plan. I would think that that's how we intentionally add. Costs, right, putting in new sidewalks, so could the idea be to. That's something you can blow off these numbers.
I think you just need to step to the park, I agree, yeah, I think.
Okay. And another idea that I have always had, I don't know. Some of the more details of the history walk, that's something that's a classic CPA.
There's no stopping adding to this.
In a roundabout way, this is not all that different than what was. Before, I guess, based on other numbers. Worked, but. So it's kind of somewhat neutral.
Yeah, because we spend two fifty on the park and we give two ninety back to the state, so. We we got to do something to what's there, so I think this is the better path of to, any point to check back. Yeah, right, I mean, seriously. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a part question?
Of course.
So we had talked about asking planning board to start the report, Mark, did that ever happen? Again, I'm just thinking with town meeting.
Roadway report.
Right, yeah. That's fine, I just wanted to make sure to ask this. Fine, that's it, thank you.
We we wrote a letter asking for that. Uh, I was told. That it was going to be on agenda that that.
Okay, but you did request it, so that that was my question, I want to make sure I've got. Thank you, sorry. Exactly, awesome, thank you.
Alright, so that's I propose plan as far as getting the working group going again. Um giving them the resources to basically complete their work. And hoping the time to do it. And then trying to be truly um as always possible as far as the cost of our gives um at town meeting. And in the summer report to get a. So that's why I know. Okay, so the article is to basically approve. Um so here's what, this is what the working group does, both um is one cost, and we want you to prove cost.
So I don't think though we should give up to very.
I mean, what was the, I'm trying to remember what the the concept, yeah, it was like twelve. Yes, under ten. So it's under ten. Right, during the bid, so.
So what number are you guys thinking?
I would say under twenty, I would want to give leeway to make sure the bid documents get done.
So I'll make a motion to approve up to twenty thousand dollars of our part money that's in the discretionary bucket. For some for to to decide to do, to give to the working group um for the Saint Mark's. For the pocket part, um to basically um finish designing the park, through the documents. So Mark is adding that more article. I mean, we're just not used to town meeting.
So just a follow up question. Raise or appropriate from what funding?
So I don't know where else to get them besides the cash to have to be, have to go through town meeting and immediately mail for after town meeting.
And this is because there was a change where we're taking out the.
And we'll talk that, we will absolutely explain that this was in the contract, we pulled it out somewhere, you can see, yeah, what the cost is.
Okay. Didn't hear what you're getting.
Okay, so. Now, you ready to pose a warrant?
I was ready, but you know.
It looked to me like there were a lot of duplicates on that list that we had, not.
No, but well, there was some. For example, and maybe this is one of them, planning board would have put something in for wet ones. For doing something with 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 the grades, but observation one do something, checking with same thing, which I confirmed was not the same thing.
But I thought there were a couple that looked to be exactly the same, they're, but again, we can prove it, but it's only one of them.
Well, it's, well, I I I I kind of weak for a lot of these placeholders, because it's just not going to be time.
Yeah.
To try and and do some of these things, so I think some of these things are going to naturally just bleed away, and I'd rather have more than the right.
Yeah.
So um so.
Yes, and she needs him, I think stormwater management dialogue updates. Is on their choice.
That's what I thought, three or four of them.
I I will eliminate any duplicate, so you can close the warrant, but we will.
So I'll make a motion to close a warrant for March twenty fifth to thousand twenty three, telling.
Other question, Mark, on the Gulf Revolving Fund, it was listed at seventy five, I thought we upped that to a hundred.
So you up to two hundreds for this year, but I don't see us changing it moving forward, because. With the amount that the payment came in, we're not going to have to change, you know, so.
Alright, so now um Chelsea wanted the next two on the agenda, so Chelsea wanted to start off with.
Okay, so I thought. It might make sense for us to. Check in with the board. Um to see if anyone had any follow up comment on the capital list for FY twenty four. And if we needed any more information um leading into our budget Saturday meeting, which I know. We're not doing capital, but I think the overall, overall picture obviously has significant impact. So um I thought we would start with that.
I mean, one, but. You know, the presentation highlighted where the support seemed, they're the most questioned about was the F three fifty for the operations. Supervisor for the.
Yeah.
I certainly had more, there were likely questions asked about that, I mean, it's one of the smaller items on the.
Still over a hundred thousand. I agree with you. Alright, so I'm going to ask one question about that one.
Yeah.
So that's one, um I still think we got to go back to sidewalk maintenance and just make sure this is something we really want to add issue.
I agree, and I think we need to make sure the road maintenance.
Yes, we got those three questions, anything else?
I'm DPW or I'm just.
So that's DPW, so it's people, it's a library, our facilities.
Well, I guess there there still seem to be some debate about the BTV. UTV, yeah, utility determining what it is. I thought they've got a different funding grant or something.
So you're okay with it now?
Yes.
Alright, um police department, the weapons, cruisers, tasers.
So the tasers are off.
Everybody's okay with police?
Yep.
Um we're going to talk about Algonquin separately, we can do everything else, so um other than Algonquin, the athletic piece of it. Are you okay with the Algonquin sidewalks and.
Yeah, yep.
Alright, um and let's see, portable radio, that's.
But that's unable.
Jason said it is, just not going to fix things, and Jason said point blank, and I get this mixed up with what you're doing dispatch has nothing to do with the radio, no matter what you do.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Now, Algonquin, um all I want to do is clarify a couple of things, um yeah, I thought. Um so I went back and re-read the regional agreement, so the way the allocation works between two towns is with some four year rolling average and great confirm. Um so it's four year, so um. It's, it doesn't get fixed when the project's done, you basically are going to. Look at allocate the debt service every year based on this four year rolling up, so it will change a little bit, just like the debt service, we may have changed a little bit. Based on the four year rolling average, so that's how it gets allocated between the two towns, right, so just assume it's roughly sixty forty. Then, the second thing is, which. It's not going to be resolved tonight is, um so right now, their intention is to basically approve this at the region. Level with the regional capital committee, right? Then where our role comes in, if that's what they do, you don't go any further with CBC, um. Then what we've got to approve as far as we propose the correct minimum are two things, it'll be in the budget if there's any debt service, which there's not supposed to be very much, right? So maybe a little bit of temporary, but it won't be much. Um but then, because it is debt, each town does have to approve that piece of it, um and I guess it's going to go in balance. For the actual debt they're going to, right, now, whether. The debt that they're, they're going to start temporary debt, right, just enter some debt, till they get the Algonquin um debt. For the high school innovation in thousand four, paid off in twenty seven, right, so that's your plan, so there's. There, it basically one replaces the other, right, so that's your plan, to try to keep the assessment fairly steady. Um but that's how we control this, the actual capital piece is not going to appear on warrant as far as proven it. Um like it is with our local cap, where it's actually on warrant, we're going to approve the actual um. Issue of the debt, yeah, so that's, so we do the control of this, right, so what we've got to do, we've got to do, so that's what we're being asked to approve at town meeting. So I just want to make that clear, okay, I run this by Brian, he agrees that that's our world's first town meeting. CBC, um CPC does, you know, their job is not to say yay or nay, the job is to say yes is qualifies as a. Someone making submission, their job is to get it, say yes qualifies for CPC funding, CCA funding. Um so they've got this as a submission as far as a piece of it, right? So I still don't want to get up, give up on the idea of CPA funds paying for pieces, but it's complicated, um because you got. Right, and north for a company is not wanting to use CPA funds for their. So, but I still don't know that that prevents us, but it just makes it more complicated, so this, we've got to have, we've got to flush this out as far as how this might work. So we're not there yet, um but I did want to clarify how the slip works, which I did, and. clarify what our role is at town meeting as far as this project.
Can we um do some allocation if we want a road more of our piece on the CPC?
I hope so, but we got to think through this side. There's just got to be a way to use CPA funds. Can they assess CPA from region instead of town, can the suspect just be sent, right, it's like they, they've got that. They came to me, so I, this is the way to do this, we can't be the first that's ever asked it, and this is one of our regional schools. Um but what I want to do tonight is seeing, at least a straw boat, is there anyone not in favor of this project? And doing it ASAP, which they want, you know, they want to start on it this summer, have it done by late fall. Advisors seem to have a little issue town, but I, what we saw, I don't see how we.
Kathy, do we know what amount of this qualifies for CPC?
No, but I'll find out, so I'll make that my job, find that out before we meet on seventeen, so that. So we're talking about ways that we might fund this, that we're taking any just be funds.
How much they're going to ask CPC for, as I'm not sure if they were thinking of asking for the.
And the potential impact if we actually bump the surcharge one percent to three percent out of that.
See, I don't think it's. We want to do this, right, we need to let us, you know, support, and we want CPC to pay as much as they can. Alright, but I did want to make sure that everybody seems to support the project, I think that's important, I really do want to find. Practicing. Okay, um, so that's all I can say.
So sorry, I wasn't. I I think we we still have questions we need to answer on the faculty. So, um, the trotty or rooftop H back unit.
Yeah.
Where we have, um, a. The grant, our partial grant. That's not. On the capital plan for this year, but I think we. Could lose. That funding if we don't do, right? Mark.
I, yeah, I, we've got a spending for sure.
So. I think we need to get that.
So we've got the grant approved, or we're hoping the grants.
So we, each community was assigned. I'm gonna choose.
Yeah.
Thousand dollars for H B A C. That's right.
Yeah.
State ARPA. And each community was given that breakage, but we don't, while we've got H B A C work to be done in this building. It's not gonna happen, put it in here, and so therefore, the only thing that we really have. And and I think capital was not what we was doing, was just part of your H B A C unit, I've had a brief conversation with the superintendent. Um, and, you know, um, he was happy to take this and apply that to this project.
Yeah.
So it may mean this project can move forward a little early in order to take advantage of that discount. What's the total project cost for that, it's over a hundred? It's over a hundred, okay.
But we don't know. Like. I don't know that we have a bit, I don't know that we have.
I don't think we have an actual bit, but I also cannot follow this many possible.
I don't remember. So I think that's probably something we should add to the seventeen, so that we. Know. I just don't wanna lose the funding, especially where it's on FY twenty five.
Yeah, so what is it you wanna add to some?
I think we need to know what the cost is and add it to.
And we're allocated granted the.
The different. And to, yeah. So if it's more than a hundred thousand, are we adding it to? The warrant? Right, well.
I don't know what the board is gonna change our money, so you're saying you gotta do it now, yeah.
So I think we we need to have a different funding source than town meeting.
Okay, remember our local money, we have to have it, um, um, we've got to sign what to use it for by the end of twenty four, we gotta spend about twenty six, this is the same way that you gotta sign.
I don't know, I don't know.
You gotta find it.
I just think, I think we need to make sure we know what we need to do.
So we'll put on seventeen, try to get the questions answered, and then as far as true, what we have to do to not do. I mean, the goal is to not lose, right?
Right. I'm I'm something that we need to do next year, anything. Um, okay. Uh, next is. Um. Self-union. I think we need to figure out what we're doing with self-union soon around a little later, so I think we should request the subcommittee to come in to give an update. On that, so at least we know where we're headed.
So why don't we do that on seventeen? And does everyone know, um, that Saint Matthews is interested in buying? I'm gonna use my last word.
I may have given them boards. Yeah, that's interesting. I mean, we've had, we've had some outreach.
Yeah.
Right, the question is how, you know, what what is the path forward to explore that, or, you know, is there an interest? Is it buy or donate? Uh, I think it's buy.
Buy was in the.
Yeah, I think it's buy.
Didn't say buy what?
The one dollar purchase.
Um. So why don't we get the subcommittee into meeting later, right?
And ask them to pursue that, see if.
See what they know. By then, I think I'm going to remember the other one on the cloud. Um, we want to talk about that some more, so I'm invited to my office on Friday, and so I will bring this up too, to see where.
Very good.
Okay. Yep. And then next is former station two, so determine the current future use of that building. So. I don't know. That's one that needs furnace, we talked about.
Yep.
Yeah, yes.
Um. And I think if there's anything additional on capital to be accelerated and offset by ARPA, but I I I'm not sure if we're gonna know that until. We talk about more, but. Okay. There we go. Can you take that one too?
I see you're done, it's on capital.
Yeah, I think those were the main. Follow ups that we had, unless somebody has.
So let's have a table station two for the moment.
I mean, I think. I think we need to see what the options are and understand what they're what they're currently using it for, and if. Uh, I mean, I think it's Mr. Parent that uses that space right now, and is there another better?
As well.
Okay. So we probably need to talk to John.
And get the furnace cost to be there there.
Yeah.
Or anything else we need to put into their cost to maintain it.
Funds.
Does it have any resale value?
Yeah. Alright, so then I asked also for the process for the twenty eight, um, and. Just, I know that we took some departments off and added. Um, a view, and there was one that I just don't think town park is gonna take that long. So if I can make a suggestion that we bump Board of Health. Down to where clerk, town clerk is and just have police and fire. In the first lot. On the second.
That actually makes sense, I think.
So say that again, you wanna you wanna get town clerk bumped.
Sorry, move move Board of Health.
From pod two.
From pod two to pod three, cuz I just don't think town parks gonna take forty minutes. So I think public safety may take.
Yeah, the full time.
The full time. Um. And just want to talk about. Expectations for, um. What what where we expect to end up at the end of that meeting and. Um, take positions, my other thought was. To have the finance team come up with their recommended budget. Um, either for that meeting or a meeting on the thirty first of that.
Um, so there's only one change to this, which you're gonna make, and spend advisory, so they've got to.
Um, I don't own this document, but I'll ask Brian to do that. So, but I'll.
What's our last time, five o'clock?
Four forty five to five thirty.
So that's gonna be a long day as it is since Saturday, um, I would suggest that we leave at five thirty, and then we do day with thirty first. Um, and do. Basically recap, um, what we think about. Something. Do you, so which is have the finance team basically say, um, this is what we're proposing, um. But I think to do that, we still. Still think the guidance and guidance, you know, um, what do we wanna try to, you know, what would you have to do to get it down? I have six. Um, but I do think that we do need to have a, it was all discussion on the thirty first as far as we're going, because at that point, you have, you know, you have to truly.
No, you're good, no. You have a good, we have basically three to four weeks before you gotta put something on the board. You can continue to massage it and prepare for amendments to do this on the floor, but if you wanna try and tie things up the for the printing topic.
So we need the seventh and the twenty eighth of February, right, those publications, we know, so we have three big break, right, so the twenty eighth.
Yeah, sorry, that's funny.
So that's why I think we need the third person to truly, um, you know. See what we are.
And you're gonna cut out a meeting, which really this will be, but it'll just be.
Special meeting, special one topic, one agenda meeting, that's all. What we need to make public comment.
And the the departments that are coming, they're all aware, they're.
Yes. And schools are gonna be ready for. This meeting?
Started, I know.
Okay.
I think one of the, I think one of the things that I, and I do appreciate. The ability of the finance team to weigh in on recommendations, but, um. If the board wants to provide, I mean, look, we talked a little bit about the C B C, new development position tonight. You know, I know that that's something that probably, you know, um. You know, they want to see that. Um, is, so, you know, I wanna make sure that we're not giving you something that doesn't have non starters in it. That, you know, I think that, um, from my perspective, the finance team is gonna give you something, but is going to leave the. Um, the residential tax shift of two and a half sitting off to the side and focus on the budget piece.
Mm hmm.
And then, you know, we can have to deal with the other piece, um, you know. It'd be nice if we had some level of of guidance, otherwise we'll give you what we feel is, you know, is is the is the best approach. Which may or may not protect anyone's particular interests or, um, goals.
So how about on the seventeen, we had actually agenda to try to, um. Provide guidance, provide, I think it is guidance that they would need, um, to to basically. Back to the pretty first, if we're here in the twenty two. We can, and then we have to use it on subjects, that still have that effect. I can hear where you pay tax or fines. That Ron is making a way to. Raise funds.
Can I add one thing under other matters, just just a comment, so the, uh, in one of the February agendas, um, the master plan implementation. Maybe we have, you know, some of the goals and there's responsibilities to select for, so you can. Put it out on one of the two agendas, we can at least, the board can be aware of what the expectation is, and, you know, there's no action due at that time, but I need to be able to report back that. Um, you know, we've discussed it and the board is aware. And again, I hope you're looking for process then, but, uh, at one of the two meetings, Kathy, would be great, thank you.
Okay, um, so I think that's a. Nine to thirty. Any more public comment? Um, you heard it? Mercy. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn, second. On paper.